Okay.
Thank you.
It's 9:34. Good morning, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order and ask the clerk, please call the roll to establish a quorum and read the Metro Cable statement.
Good morning, Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, February 10th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda and off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make that comment. To make a comment by phone, please dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda or off-agenda item. The clerk will transfer each caller into the meeting, and you may be on hold for an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please seek clerk staff for assistance, or contact our office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you, Flo. Supervisor Kennedy, can you please lead us in the pleasurable legion?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we will, I have no opening statements, we'll move on to item number one, which is public comment for items not on the posted agenda, so that the public has an opportunity to comment on any item that isn't otherwise on either the consent agenda or the timed items for today. And I'll turn over to our clerk. Do we have any off-agenda public comments?
We do. At the time, we have three, and so I will call Mr. Ryan Harris to the podium, please.
Good morning. Last time I was here, I tried to give a shout-out to Don Nativi, but I was cut off, so, Mr. Nativi, if you're listening, I'm accepting of you being my mentor, and I just wanted to get that in for my time was up. Also, Pat Hume, if you give me any thought, I'm open to you mentoring me as well, because your colleagues have all turned down an opportunity to mentor a member of the Black community. So that is now offered to you as well, if you would like to do that, and maybe you guys could show me how to have a voice in a world that you all control, because it's pretty hard to do. And that reminds me that last week, you guys did cut off the people, you know, we only get to see you for a limited amount of time, and you cut them back to two minutes, so it's just hard that, you guys are supposed to be the voice of the people, but you limit the people's voices, and I know we only get three minutes to talk, and you guys have a very stringent process on which members of the community you decide to respond to. And you turn a blind eye to things that you feel that aren't important. So that's why I brought this up here again, to show you some of the things that we feel are important, and let me know if you guys think the same. All right, so I told you about this mess a couple of weeks ago, Rich Desmond, and how it's just constantly messy over there. You never clean it up, so we cleaned it up ourselves. We didn't have room for one piece of furniture, so I say, you know, hopeful, maybe he'll send somebody by to pick it up. That furniture is still there today. After we did clean the fence, this was now spray painted on the fence and someone else's car and stuff. So I know you guys gave a lot of money to the police department. It'd be nice if they could drive through there, help clean stuff up, and I'm kind of wondering what you're going to do, because in the past couple of years, five or more people have died on what is, I guess, now called dead block.
You have five minutes. I mean, sorry, five seconds. Sorry.
All right. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Mark Baker. Let me get you, let me get you set up real quick.
Hi, I'm a little nervous and inexperienced at this, but you, I want to introduce our new group, River City Waterway Alliance. You've seen our work for the past year, two years, cleaning up the waterways, and we, three weeks ago, we started our new group, and this is our January report, which you can see on Facebook, Instagram, or YouTube, but we were only, keep in mind, this was way back in January, when we were only three weeks old. We have already cleaned up, I think, 87,000 pounds of trash from our river, our waterways, Arcade Creek, mostly the American River Parkway. I think your friend Dan was in here introducing our cleanup at Township Nine a couple of weeks ago. We spent seven days cleaning up, here we are, cleaning up Township Nine, working with Forensic Clean, I think, I don't know how many tens of thousands of pounds we removed from just the small sections. If you look at our areas, they're just incredibly clean, except for below, the water's gone down a lot now, but we worked with the campers there. Here's Arcade Creek. So this is, I think we did 13 cleanups in three weeks in January. I think we have nine or 10 scheduled in the next two or three weeks. We're doing two or three, or three or four cleanups every week. Thursday, we're at Riverdale, cleaning up around the Camp Pollock area. The next day, we're back at Howe Avenue for our fourth cleanup in the last three weeks. I can't even remember, Saturday and Sunday are the big ones, and we're back at Township Nine.
Mr. Baker, you have 10 seconds.
I just wanted to let you guys know, you'll be hearing from me, I hope to be doing, giving you monthly reports with our tonnage, but thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you leave, sir, so I was going, I was taking the opportunity to look at some of the news coverage from some of your recent efforts.
Four times in the last week.
Yeah.
We were just on Univision today.
Yeah. So I just, many of the locations you just mentioned are in the district I represent, especially those areas in and along the American River Parkway. So I just wanted to say thank you in public for your volunteerism, and it seems that we have a growing list, which is a good thing, growing list of organizations and efforts that are committed to removing trash and debris from the parkways, and that's not lost on this supervisor. And I think it's important that we acknowledge how grateful we are to organizations like yours, individuals like you, because we can't do it alone. As you know, it's a phenomenally large task, and having been out there, and all five of us have been out on the parkway, Dry Creek Parkway as well, volunteering on occasion with various groups, so we know firsthand the order of magnitude that the challenge is to keep our parkways clean. But again, I'm glad you took the time to be here with us this morning and to acknowledge the work that, the great work you're doing, and I certainly look forward to hearing future reports.
Oh, good. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. And Mark, thank you as well. I'll, yes, Mark, I just, I wanted to also just add my thanks to that as well, and certainly let, you know, let my office know, and let us know when you have these scheduled pickups, because the report is great to hear if you come back here, but I'd like to find opportunities where I can go out and help out, and I know, you know, my colleagues share that desire as well, so.
Okay, great. Yeah, again, on Facebook, you'll see, you know, we have not, I think, eight or 10 already scheduled for the next three weeks, so.
I'll just add too, and this is, it's not unusual, but if your organization's in need of, you know, rakes, bags, you know, all the accoutrement that is necessary to, you know, provide the best opportunity for your folks to get out there and do the work you're doing, please let me know, let us know. We don't have a whole lot of discretionary funding, but I think this would be a good investment to do what we can to help flank you and support you.
Great. Well, the American River Parkway, or the county regional parks has been a great partner for us. They give us all the bags we can use, as long as we promise to fill them up and give them back. But, you know, yeah, they're, the maintenance crews with the, with county parks are so wonderful, and Forensic Clean, too, they've really stepped up, so anyway.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Mr. Brian Kidd. One second, let me get you set up really quick.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you stand in between the mics.
Between the mics. I just liked the right one. Thank you for letting me come speak to you today. My name is Brian Kidd, father, husband, living on Roseville Road. Moved to town about two and a half years ago, and I'm sure that you've been hearing, there has been a growing issue of homelessness right along Elkhorn Boulevard and Roseville Road, and it has been becoming more and more of a problem over the last month at least. About four weeks ago, my wife and I were driving down Roseville Road just by Elkhorn Boulevard, and there was a man laying on the side of the road, had scoring blood just coming down his face. We pulled over, had been sitting there for a while, most of it was dried. We called an EMS, and they came and picked him up. Somebody had hit him. It was a transient that was just crossing the street and got hit, and hit and run. Then about three weeks ago, a next-door neighbor had his carburetor stolen from his truck. About two weeks ago, new family moved in across the street, there was a squatter in the house, another one of those transients that were living there. One week ago, across the street, another neighbor had his work truck broken into, as they were stealing a bunch of items from his truck. Four days ago, there was an attic that was jumping fences across backyards to get out to Roseville Road. At least four different houses, they jumped through their fences to get through there, ran right next door to my house to get over there. Then just yesterday, I asked a transient to please move his van away from the back of my house. He got out with a baseball bat and attacked my fence, broke a hole in my fence. Tried to move over, see, another one of the issues that my wife will be speaking about is them making it difficult to see as you're making turns out of the streets. They're blocking the viewpoints as well. Then you get up to our house, sorry, that's also the tire shop they opened up on the road. That's the second one in the last month that they've had a tire shop open. Then you keep going, and then here's our house, and then he busted a hole in the fence. Luckily, I had put some boards on the inside, so he didn't actually break through, but it is becoming more and more of an issue. The specific section, we understand that everyone, like the first gentleman said, they're doing what they can to clean this area up.
Mr. Kidd, you have five seconds.
Okay. The biggest issue is that it's not glamorous, but it needs to be cleaned up. There's multiple houses that have been caught on fire because of this, and, yep.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chair.
That was right next to a no parking sign that he happened to be parked at, and the problem is it's private land. Above Elkhorn, below Andrea Road, they're private land, so they don't go there.
Okay, thank you.
But because we're not private.
And I think you mentioned that your, your wife will be talking as well. Supervisor Serna, and, well, Supervisor Frost, and Supervisor Serna, and I have my, some comments of my own as well.
I, I think this is your, is this your district?
It is.
Oh, then I will defer to you.
I have a few.
I wasn't sure, but I was going to ask him to reach out to my office, but you're probably going to say the same thing.
It's in foothill forms.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to suggest that my understanding is that our hot team is now fully staffed and deployed, and so, well, that's, okay, maybe we can hear from Mr. Jones about that, but to the extent that they are somewhat engaged and deployed, I think the fact that, you know, the activities that have been brought to our attention this morning are continuing, it's Mr. Desmond's district, but that seems to be a priority area, so, you know, I would suggest that perhaps we provide some added direction to the extent that we can, to see that that area is addressed.
If, if I may, the deputy I spoke to yesterday said that they had two hot team members, and they were working the staff up to 12.
Right. I'm going to ask some questions after your wife speaks, this, we're in public comment right now.
Yes, sir.
So maybe let your wife speak, and then I'll make a few comments. This is not an agenda item, so we got to, we can't talk too much about it, but why don't we, I think your wife signed up to talk, and then I'll have a few comments, and then maybe give Mr. Jones an opportunity to respond specifically with respect to the hot team, because I think there's, you know, a lot of information about that as well.
Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Now we have Sadie Kidd.
Oh, thank you. Do I start? Oh, okay, hi, so I'm Sadie Kidd, I am his wife, and I am here pretty much to show his pretty face. We're right next to Roseville. Aside from the homelessness being extremely scary, and what happened yesterday really scared me, it's, we can't even play outside, because we're scared of the homeless going to jump the fence. They have hit our fence now, and aside from that, that street itself, people that drive through there, they go 50 miles an hour and higher, and our neighbors next door had a car just completely take out all their fence. So that's, that's something that scares me, because we made a playground outside for him, and every time I go outside, I just become extremely scared that something that may happen to us. So mainly, I'm here because the homelessness is a problem. They are attacking our homes now, and that street is just unsafe to drive at that, at that speed. And I'm doing it for him, because you would like to feel safe in your own home. Yeah, the car was uninsured, too, so they, it came out of pocket for the people that had to replace our fence.
Thank you. Is there someone else to speak from Roseville Road as well? You're not signed up? Okay. Okay, we're on public.
Do you want to take my 39 seconds left?
He can sign up for you.
Yeah, you can sign up on your own. Come on down, come on down to the podium. You can fill out the form afterwards, so we have your information.
We've been living there for over 20 years. My name is Rick.
Come up, sir, come up to the microphone first, just so we can all hear you.
What they're talking about is Tacoma Avenue and Roseville Road.
Right.
Andrea and Roseville Road. You could check the highway patrol, they're there multiple times a year for severe accidents before they let people start camping in a no parking zone. I'd be one of the first to hop the fence, ask people if they need help. These people aren't wanting help. They're, they're, it's literally a village. That's not proper. Cops can't do anything. I call them quite often. They told me to come to these meetings. I'm here, first time ever, but this is not cool. It shouldn't even be happening. But I really wanted to speak out to what they're talking about, these, I mean, I've had, my house, road, my fence has been on fire twice within the last eight years by things being burned that shouldn't be burned. I can't let my dogs go outside because of the things you smell, and just the things that are going behind the fence. I put my life in danger anytime somebody parks behind there, because I feel like it's my, I'm protecting my home. It's no parking, please enforce the laws. That's all I can ask for.
Thank you. Thank you. And so, thank you all for, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you being here. It is important, your engagement, being here and coming and talking to us, so I am so grateful for that. This location on Roseville Road is one that I have brought to the attention of county staff multiple times, have seen it grow over the last year, year and a half. It is a priority spot for unincorporated Sacramento County, certainly in my district. If I'm not mistaken, I believe it's one of the top sites now at this point, because we have so many sites that we have to prioritize. But it is not lost on me or the county staff, that just the proximity to the campers and the encampments to the homes, just on the other side of the fence, makes this a much more troublesome spot. And so, I mean, I know we, you know, I looked to our county council to, to let us know, but can we indulge county staff to just give us a little bit of report on this?
That's fine.
Encampment, okay. And I turned to our county, yeah, county exec or Eric or Sean.
I'll go ahead and begin, if that's okay. Yes, so Deputy County Executive Eric Jones, Public Safety and Justice. The sheriff's hot team and pop teams have been lower staffing, as, as we have known and have discussed, but the sheriff and undersheriff, we have regular discussions, and they're building those teams back up. I, I don't believe they're full yet, but they will be soon, according to the sheriff's office, and they have been addressing a number of locations. I know they've been there before, but they're also in our regular weekly meetings where we collaborate with all of the various county agencies. This location is in the queue for, to continue to be addressed.
Okay, and I will be leaning on you for a more definitive solution and answer than that. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair, and I'd be happy to join in those conversations as well, but obviously, because this is a non-agendized item, we can't get too deep in the weeds. But I would encourage you, first of all, let me say this, and I say this not as a snarky, flippant comment, but literally, welcome to the neighborhood, we're happy to have you. Don't know where you moved from, but Sacramento is not what you're witnessing out your back fence. But I would also like to encourage you to write your legislatures at both the state and federal level, because there's a lot that we can do, but there's a lot that we can't do, and it's because we're hamstrung by federal policy and by state legislation and by a decision out of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, that I think gets a little bit misinterpreted, but nonetheless, it tilts the, the favor of permissiveness towards those that are causing you grief, rather than us that would, would really like to clean things up and clear them out of there for you. So please help us help you.
Okay. So we're, we're, this is a public comment period, so I would also encourage you, I know you've, I think you've been in contact with my office, so let's, let's follow up on that. I'd like to maybe talk with you directly about some of these efforts, and I'll, I'll just let my colleagues know, I talked to our county exec yesterday and requested that at some point, maybe the next couple of months, that we have a presentation here at the Board about our outreach and engagement efforts in the, specifically in the unincorporated county, because there's obviously a lot of attention on the support we're providing in the city of Sacramento. I think it's, it's important for me specifically to know what we're doing and what our plans are for that, specifically for the outreach and engagement in the unincorporated areas, and that would include a discussion, I would hope we could get the sheriff's department here as well, to talk about the latest efforts with the homeless outreach team, which this Board funds, so certainly we'll be following up on that and look forward to hearing your input as we prepare for that. So thank you once again for being here today.
Okay, our next speaker is Christine Ridge.
Good morning. I wanted to ask our county Board of Supervisors what our current state of emergency is, please.
Okay, this is not a back-and-forth exchange for public comment right now, so you have, you have a minute and 45 seconds left.
Okay. So for me, it's unclear what the current state of emergency is. Last meeting I attended, it was racism, but I feel like we have a mental health emergency. We also have a homeless emergency, and we also have a misinformation, disinformation, propaganda emergency. I emailed my county supervisor, who was Don Nativi at the time, and several times, I didn't get responses back from him. On July 28th, I sent him the COVID Summit link to the COVID Summit Rally, where they were talking about hydroxychloroquine curing COVID. And then again, on December 8th, I tried attending a meeting, but it was COVID emergency, so I wasn't allowed in. On December 8th, I followed up with a RICO reminder, and I submitted the county Board of Supervisor Don Nativi with a reminder not to engage in racketeering, especially medical tyranny. And then January 12th, 2021, I followed up again with a note about my experience in Washington, DC. None of these emails were ever responded to. Today, I was forced to present my county Board of Supervisors with Robert Kennedy's book. I've been following Bobby Kennedy since 2016. He's been advocating for children's health and for our health and for community health the whole entire time. I invite these books to be kept in the county archives as an example, so that this kind of malfeasance never occurs again in our county. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Supervisor Hume, did you have a comment, or was that the last?
My apologies, Chair. You can still clear them in your, on your screen as well.
Okay, well, we will have to.
Wow, from the new guy.
We'll have to address this offline. Supervisor Frost.
You're truly never going to live this down now. I just wanted to thank Christine for the book and let you know that I will read it.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Madam Clerk, any more public comment?
That concludes your public comments for off-agenda matters.
Okay, thank you. So now we will move to consent matters, items two through 22, and first I'll ask my colleagues if there's any consent item that you'd like to either pull off consent or, or make comment upon. So first, start with Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair Desmond. I'd like to pull item 13 for questions.
Item 13 is the authority to execute a multi-year, $0 memorandum of understanding for the term February 25th, 2023 through June 30th, 2026, with the State of California Department of Public Health, to participate in the COVID network of California laboratories for SARS and COVID-2 whole genome sequencing.
So I, I have a couple of questions. I don't know if Dr. Casiri is here.
Dr. Casiri is on the line.
Okay, great. Hi, Dr. Casiri. Hello?
Dr. Casiri, you're on the line?
No worries.
We could maybe hold off and go to Supervisor Serna and come back to item 13?
No problem.
Okay. Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have comments, brief comments on, let's see, items four, 10, and 15.
Item four is authorize the Director of Airports to execute the First Amendment to the Agreement for Capital Program Delivery Consulting Services with Answer Advisory Consulting.
Great, thank you. Certainly prepared to support the item this morning, and just wanted to note that this is part of our SMF Forward construction effort at SAC International. Had the opportunity last week to join Sydney Nichols with our airport system to hold a press conference at Terminal B, but many of the improvements that are going to occur to improve accessibility, comfort, and convenience at SMF are nothing short of, I think, remarkable. It's going to be the largest enhancement project for the airport in the history of the system at $1.3 billion, and it will include things like finally building a pedestrian bridge to join the world's shortest people mover, as well as a new, new additional parking and a state-of-the-art car rental complex. So really, you know, eager to see that come to fruition, as I know many in the traveling public are as well, and we can hopefully continue to receive the accolades that our airport, our international airport has received over the last few years for its convenience and accessibility. This is certainly going to go a long way, I think, to make that happen, so I just wanted to make those comments and. So I just wanted to make those comments and appreciate it.
All right. Item 10 is the authorization to execute an agreement with leaders and community alternatives for inmate reentry services.
Great, thank you. This is a question for Mr. Jones. So as you know, Eric, we are continuing to have our meetings now more in the context of the consent decree relative to improvement on our release, jail release policies, procedures, protocols. And I was wondering whether or not this agreement is, or could actually be a part of that broader effort. I know this is, I think, more contracting services to prepare incarcerated individuals to, you know, really maximize their opportunities for employment and to train them once they're released, in other words, do everything we can to minimize recidivism. But I'm also eager to hear your thoughts about whether or not you see this contract and the services we envisioned through the contract actually providing us a timely complementary effort to what we're doing relative to, especially relative to the main jail and minimizing the impact on downtown Sacramento.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Serna. So this contract does provide for reentry and counseling services to those, really for, through AB 109 funding. But where I see this tying into the May's consent decree item plans that are intended to reduce the overall jail population, primarily main jail, as you mentioned, and also RCCC with the consent decree, this is designed for that Intercept 5 model piece of it, which is to aid those to not come back into the system through those reentry services. So it is one of the specific strategies for compliance for the consent decree.
Okay. To the extent that we could, I don't know, incorporate some regular report backs in what will be kind of regular convenings of the work group that's really been assigned the effort to look at how we improve our release practices, I think that would be helpful to understand what our contractual partners are doing to advance the effort that I just mentioned, so appreciate that.
And then item 15, authorize the, oh, sorry.
Madam Clerk, I believe Supervisor Kennedy may have a comment on item 10 as well. Is that?
Thank you, Chair. I brought it up in our briefing, and we've had subsequent email back and forth a couple on some concerns that members of the public have brought, you know, to me. And I understand that you guys were looking into, staff was looking into that. I don't see a response, maybe I missed it, I apologize if so, but could at least briefly comment on that?
Yes. Eric Jones, again, Public Safety and Justice. Yes, there were a couple of concerns about the vendor that was chosen through the competitive bid process and perhaps some sort of litigation. So we did, both county council, sheriff's office staff, and myself did look into that. There was a case filed, however, that case was dismissed in entirely different county. But also felt importantly, that type of service that was under that filed lawsuit is completely different than what the counseling services provided here, meaning that was very specific to monitoring, GPS ankle bracelets or that type of equipment, as well as those using the equipment were actually paying the vendor through an arrangement. Neither of those exist here, which means there's no funding going from those receiving the counseling services to the vendor, nor is there any monitoring associated with this particular contract.
Thank you. Were you able to actually reach out to the vendor themselves and get their response to the concerns?
I was not. I can check with the sheriff's office, who do have a representative here today, to look into that, or to be able to answer that.
Okay, I mean, it's just, you know, the, understood that the services are very different, and so therefore maybe it's not, you know, analogous to what we're contracting out to or propose to contract out to. However, you know, if, you know, there's a corporate character issue here, I'd be interested in, you know, finding out about it now before we end up in closed session.
Yes, understood. So I'll just reiterate one point, which was the specific lawsuit reference was dismissed or didn't go forward through the court. So I believe Chris Baker and/or Lori Schwartz are here to be able to answer any detailed question around the process of corresponding and working with this vendor.
I'd appreciate that.
I heard that they may be coming from the branch, so that they may not be here yet.
Oh, all right. Well, there's my concerns and my questions. Maybe we could continue and maybe we'll have representation here.
So we'll hold off on this item certainly until we get the right folks here to comment on it. Did Supervisor Frost or Supervisor Hume any comments on this item 10 before we move back to Supervisor Serna? Okay. Item 14.
Item 15 is to authorize the Department of Human Assistance to enter into an agreement with the Lau Family Community Development and the Slavic American Chamber of Commerce and the World Relief Sacramento to provide wraparound services to the Ukrainian refugees effective upon board approval.
Great, thank you. What I would like to suggest, and this may already be in the works, but I would like to see Mr. Chair report back on the efficacy of the efforts to provide Ukrainian refugee services by these various organizations. And I don't know what the appropriate and fair amount of time is to let pass before we, you know, to give them a chance to all do what they're contracted to do. But whether it's six months or a year, I think it's important for this board and the public to understand what's occurring in terms of hopefully helping our refugee population, you know, find jobs, get acquainted with new communities and that type of thing. So I don't know, Anne, if you have any thoughts on that or others?
Sure, thank you Supervisor Serna. Yes, we absolutely can do that. I would want to talk with both the department and how the department speak with the vendors about how much time they think they need. You know, startup can take several months. I think six months would be the minimum, one year might be better, but we will talk about that and then certainly bring that back to you.
Great, thank you.
And I'd like to thank you Supervisor Serna for calling this out. I was going to actually make comment as well. Certainly appreciate staff's efforts. This board during the budget season last year made a commitment to support our refugee communities, both the large refugee community from Afghanistan and Ukrainian refugee community. So I thank staff for getting this out there. And these groups, I have a high level of confidence that they all do great work, but I absolutely agree with Supervisor Serna. We need to have a report back, not only on this contract, but I would say also on the Afghan refugee supports, the contract that this board funded as well for them. I think we could maybe combine a report back for both of those.
Sure.
So, and I see, Anne, you're keyed up here. Did you have any?
I just want to say that before, as we move on, Dr. Casiri is on the line. She was having technical difficulties.
Okay, great, still move. Okay, if there's any other comment on, yes, Supervisor Hume?
Yeah, Chair, I just want to throw my me-too on the pile here, that I would like to have a, you know, a report back on it, whatever it is, that shows that this money reached the communities it was intended to serve. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, then we'll go back to item 13. Dr. Kay is on the phone. Supervisor Frost.
Hi, Dr. Kay. Thank you for coming online, and I have a couple of questions regarding item 13. I don't know if the clerk would like to read it into the record again.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Okay, so this item is calling for an MOU, an extended MOU over three years, and I had a couple of questions regarding the MOU. I didn't see the MOU, or I didn't see any detail in the MOU, and I was wondering, what is whole genome sequencing of COVID-19 specimens? What does that mean?
Good morning. This is Dr. Olivia Casiri, Public Health Officer for Sacramento County. Thank you for the questions. Just to give a little bit of background, whole genome sequencing is one of the lab methodologies that we use for being able to identify the type of bacteria or virus that is causing an outbreak or an illness. And what it does is, there's a test that is done to actually find out the sequence of what we call nucleotides, which are part of the genes in the bacteria or virus. And it's, I guess you could compare it to fingerprinting because it gives you a precise information about the variant, and it helps us, for example, Supervisor Hume, recently I was talking to you about an outbreak that we were investigating on foodborne botulism, and we were trying to figure out what the source was. Using this whole genome sequencing on the specimens that were submitted allowed us to actually identify that all of the cases were linked because they had the exact same sequence. And then when we identified the source, which happened to be cheese from a natural cheese machine, we were able to test the bacteria in there as well and identify that they had the same sequence. So that helped us to verify that these were linked cases and that actually the source that we had found was the source of this outbreak. We also use it a lot in TB when we're investigating, especially with TB that is drug resistant, because we want to find out if there's any linkage with additional cases. We used it very recently with a very rare, what we call pre-XDR, which is a very resistant type of TB, and we were able to identify that the cases we found were indeed linked and that there were no other cases within California, actually within the entire US. So this was a new strain that was being introduced in the population. For COVID, the way that we have used whole genome sequencing is mainly to identify new strains. For example, when the Delta strain was first identified, and then again Omicron, and now there are some variants such as probably you've heard of BBX that's coming up. And so this is a way for us to monitor what's happening with, within the, with the different diseases that we are monitoring to identify if there are new strains that are coming up that might be of concern.
And can you tell me what data they will be using to track? You're saying that you're identifying bacteria and viruses, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And what data are they using to track that? Is it, are they using DNA? And what are, where are they getting the DNA? Is it from the PCR tests, testing, or from hospital lab testing, or from autopsies? Where are they getting this DNA?
This is, these are specimens that are submitted to our public health lab.
So these are specimens that were collected through the PCR testing?
So these are specimens that are collected from individuals that are diagnosed with COVID, and then they go through a process to then do the whole genome sequencing. PCR is a different test that we use that is also used for being able to identify the type of virus or bacteria. The difference is that with PCR, it will tell us that it is COVID, but it might not be able to identify that it is either the Alpha or the Delta or the Omicron strain. With the whole genome sequencing, this is more like fingerprinting. It's an additional step. It's separate, it is more labor intensive, but yeah, it uses a specimen.
Are they, are these tests given just in the hospital then? This is a more extensive test that we're not aware of, or, so this is patient information that we're, in this MOU, we're agreeing to use patient information. My question is, because that, we're lifting, we've lifted the state of emergency on COVID, and now we're talking about a three-year contract that would access patient information without their authorization. So is that, I think what, I don't know if you can answer this right now, but I would need to know, what does this MOU agree to? And does it have an impact on a patient's privacy without their informed consent?
So the MOU that we are presenting is actually between the county and the state public health lab. We already do actually send lab specimens to the state under the Health and Safety Code. So this is not unusual. In the, for this particular monitoring or for this particular MOU, because it, what they're looking for is not so much diagnosis, but it's looking for, it's more of looking to see if there are new strains that are coming up in the community, we're actually going to be asked to just send a sample, and it's, not all of our specimens will be sent to the state. It's only a sample, maybe two to three per week. And the only information that will be included will be the zip code, because they're interested in seeing, for example, where this, if there is a new strain identified, where the new strain could be. But no additional patient information will be included. But again, I do want to emphasize that on a regular basis, when we are reporting the reportable diseases, this information goes into the state database.
So I'm not sure I understand, because we have, over the past three years, been announcing new strains. We've been voting on new states of emergency for Omicron and monkeypox. There's then, you know, numerous articles that have indicated that there are hundreds of strains of this, and yet the CDC has not been able to show that they have isolated even the COVID-19 virus, let alone the other strains. And so now, my question is, are we, if we're taking random samples of people's DNA, are we notifying those people so that they can give authorization for that?
I'd like to verify a few things. We are not taking people's DNA. This is, the specimens that we are taking are of the virus and the bacteria. It's not people's DNA. Also, I believe I did send you an article last year that proved that the CDC did actually isolate the virus that causes COVID-19, the SARS-CoV-2.
Actually, the article that you sent me last year identified one method, but not the gold standard, which is coaxed postulate. So it was not isolated. It was basically, you know, fluid, human fluid, body fluid in a Petri dish that had chemicals and other things added to it. And that is not the gold standard for isolating a virus over time. So in my opinion, that was, we're not looking at all the information available to us. But I think for today's conversation, so what you're saying is whole genome sequencing does not involve DNA?
It does not involve human DNA, at least not the contract that we are talking about. A public health lab only handles specimens that are either viruses, bacteria, or fungi. We are not collecting any human DNA in this.
And just to make sure I understand. And just to make sure I understand, the county is agreeing with the state to share medical information, people's medical information that was submitted to local labs, who had, people who had COVID?
We're not sharing medical information. I mentioned in this MOU, all we are sharing is the zip codes.
And what is, is there an MOU? Because it's not in our packet. There is no specific MOU.
We don't usually attach the details of the MOU to the packet. We just describe what the, usually when we are writing the board letter, we describe what the project is about, but definitely the MOU is available if you want to read it.
Supervisor Frost.
Yeah, I don't think we can make an informed policy decision if we don't know what we're signing regarding that MOU.
So we do have that electronically. We will be sending that to you and we will also be including it in the record.
Okay. And I also have a question regarding partners. In the staff report, it talks about partners. And I know this isn't the first time I've had a question about information security. I've had, I had a request back in October regarding, with our registrar of voters, asking about partners and whose information, you know, I had an inquiry from a constituent who had applied for a job as a poll worker, and she went through all the authorizations to get the interview for the job online. And she found that there were some authorizations that were asking her to basically accept that her IP address would be shared, her audio patterns would be, facial recognition would be analyzed, that they would have access to all of her private information, and this information was shared outside the country. I have still, I'm still waiting for a response on that. I have toured the registrar of voters' office. That's just one other way that information security is important to my constituents. This is just one more, you know, red flag to me. I wonder, who are the partners? And are they other countries? And which countries are they?
The only entity that we're sharing information with is with CDPH, so I'm not aware of any other partners that you're mentioning.
Okay, well, CDPH is an arm of CDC, which is a private business, for-profit corporation. So, well, they're not, they're not elected to represent the people, so they're a business. But that's beside, that's outside what this conversation, I think I've asked some of the questions that I have, but I would like to see the MOU so that I can understand the contract. I don't know if there's any public comment on this.
Well, so my plan was to, unless you want to pull something off, consent for a separate vote.
If there's public comment, I thought we could hear public comment and then I can decide how to manage.
Okay. So are you requesting to pull this item off consent? Or a separate vote?
Probably, but I thought if there's public comment, we could hear that, be informed by that, and then make that determination.
Okay. Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we finish with the other, Supervisor comments on the other items, and then we'll come back and take this item separately with public comment? Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll hold a vote.
Chair, can I just clarify one thing? I just, because I noticed that I said CDPH without actually spelling it out. CDPH is the California Department of Public Health, which is part of the state, so it's part of the government. I just wanted to make sure, in case anyone had questions about what I was talking about. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. K. So what we'll do, we'll continue with the rest of the comments from supervisors. I have a comment on an item myself on consent. Then we'll take public comment on those items and then we'll go back to Supervisor Frost. If it's okay with you, we'll go back to this item and take that separately with public comment and a separate vote. Is that, is that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I will go back to Supervisor Kennedy, because it looks like the sheriff's representatives are here to answer your questions on item 10.
And if I may, through the chair, I'll begin. And then, as you see, the sheriff's representatives are here. So I did determine, when speaking with them, that they have not recently reached out to LCA or this particular vendor about that specific case, but did want to make clear that probation department actually is in contract with this very same vendor for similar services and has been for several years, I think up to 10. And the probation chief is willing to talk about their ongoing relationship with this same vendor as well, if it's helpful.
That would actually be very helpful. But you said same services, same services as we're talking about now or the same services that were the subject of the lawsuit before?
For the probation department, I would have asked for the probation chief to summarize that perhaps.
Okay.
Okay. Chief?
Thank you, Board.
Morning.
One more time.
Correct. We have contracted with the LCA for about 10 years now. So some of you may recall, we previously, we've had three different adult day reporting centers. Going back about 10 years, LCA had been the provider at one of them. Over time, we've gone back to RFP for those services. LCA won that contract and is now providing services at all three of our adult day reporting centers. In addition to that, we currently use that same vendor to provide all of the connectivity for supports with regards to our pretrial population. So much smaller contract, but also, again, working with us to connect our clients to services. In the day reporting world, they provide essentially the cognitive-based treatments of the classes that help with, you know, dealing with impulse control, how to deal with difficult people, managing your emotions, you know, staying clean and sober, et cetera. Overall, we've been pleased with the contract and the provider. We did a lot of research, our own due diligence, if you will, and sort of checking references with regards to similar services provided in other jurisdictions by them. And it's all been favorable for the most part. The largest challenge perhaps is staff retention. And so we've had some of their staff actually apply and be employed by the probation department. And so ensuring that sort of consistency with regards to the, you know, the folks who are engaging our clientele has been maybe the biggest piece, but that's my impression.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I'm satisfied.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Okay, so we'll move on to Supervisor Hume.
Great, thank you, Chair. First, let me start by helping the chair out real quick. There we go. Okay, I'm off the list now.
All right, good job.
You're learning. I can be trained.
Only took three meetings.
I know, I know. You'll get it, you'll get it eventually, though. I have faith in you. First of all, I wasn't going to comment on it, but I would like to mention, since Supervisor Frost brought it up, I did think it was a little bit unorthodox to be voting on an MOU and not have the MOU in front of you to read the language. However, I have comments on item number three and item number 12, please.
Thank you. Item number three is the contract for the Sacramento Mather Airport Tower Small Digital Voice Switch System Replacement and Aircraft Emergency System Upgrade.
And my comments are not actually on this item, except that it mentions Mather, and I probably should do this under item 30 for future comments, but I had asked for a report back on the CAT 3 landing system to be installed at Mather. And so I appreciate the answer that Mr. Villanueva tracked down for me. However, I would like more information on some background there. And so I'm just mentioning this so that my staff can capture it, that I would like to follow up on that. Thank you.
And Mr. Hume, did you say item 12?
I did say item 12.
Thank you. This is to rename the Morgan Alternative Center to Natoli Place.
And now for something completely different. I just wanted to bring this item to folks' attention, because this is actually some really good news. And, you know, Supervisor Natoli cast a long shadow while he was here, and I'm sure this is not the last of the influence that we will see in a go-forward basis. But I had the opportunity to tour some of the facilities out at Branch Center, and one of them was this particular facility. Michelle Caiess and her team should be commended for what they have done out there. This took what was a youth detention facility and has now turned it into a, I don't think receiving home is the right terminology, but it's a place for adults who are in the protective custody system to be able to have a place of respite while their lives, hopefully, are figured out and they're put back together a little bit. And, you know, some of the stories that she shared, as far as the situations that these people find themselves in, that land them to this facility, it's just great to know that we have increased our capacity from six beds for the entire county to now this facility alone will accommodate up to 90 individuals. And it's a good thing, and I'm glad that it's being named after Supervisor Natoli, because he really took what he saw was a need. He scoured the budget and worked with the director in order to get this to come to fruition. And I'm just happy that it's on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. I couldn't agree more. It's a great project, and I think it's very appropriate to name it after Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Frost, did you have any other item that you wanted to discuss? Okay. So I would like to just make a quick comment on item eight.
Item eight, let me get there. Item eight is to authorize the deputy county executive to execute the agreement for maintenance and operations on shared transportation facilities between the county of Sacramento and the city of Rancho Cordova.
Thank you. And I just want to start, thank our staff for working very closely with officials from the city of Rancho Cordova on this issue. As it struck me, when we had the commenters who live off of Roseville Road and Foothill Farms, about the issues they're having with encampments in close proximity to their homes. It's very similar to this situation that this item is addressing on Citrus Road in Rancho Cordova, where we have some residents who actually live in the city of Rancho Cordova, but are being very negatively impacted by a lot of encampments behind their homes. And staff worked very hard with Rancho Cordova to come up with some innovative ideas on how we can address this. And I think this is a good step forward. Obviously, this will be accompanied by a lot of outreach and engagement with the folks who are camping there to try to get them connected with services. But ultimately, we have an obligation to make sure that people in their homes are not constantly disturbed by these encampments and living under threats from some limited number of people in these encampments. So thank you for your efforts. I'm looking at Dave DeFonte and our DOT folks and our county exec and others. So with that, if there's no further comment on items other than item 13, let's look, how about public comment on everything other than item 13? Do we have any public comment?
We do have a public comment for item 13, no other consent callers. Sorry, I had misspoke.
Yes, Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to clarify on item 12. It's 90 individuals within a year, 15 at a time, and these are for seniors who are in the adult protective custody, not a general shelter.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, just to clarify, we'll do public comment on all the consent items with the exception of 13. Can we do that?
Oh, okay.
Because we're going to take item 13 separately after we do the rest of the consent items.
Okay, understood.
Isn't that what we, we're going to do? Okay. Is that, can we do that?
Yeah.
And our sheriff representatives are here to answer questions.
All right.
So, Chair, I would move the balance of consent with the exception of item 13.
Second?
Okay. We have a first and a second on the balance of the consent items.
Hey, unanimous vote for matters 2 through 22, with the exception of 13.
Okay, then we will go back. So we didn't have any public comment on any other items other than 13?
Correct.
Okay. So then we'll go back to item 13, take public comment on that, unless Supervisor Frost, you had any other comments before we go into public comment? Okay.
And I do want to let the record reflect that I have closed the public comment.
Oh, thank you.
And would you please transfer the caller? You have two minutes.
Hi, yes, good morning. I wanted to share a little bit of information I'm not sure you guys are aware of or the county. But in a state of emergency, there is legislation in place that gives public health the authority to quarantine people in the name of public safety against their will. So when I hear that the county is going to enter a MOU for tracking and tracing, I'm on high alert. And it's pretty disturbing, especially I looked through the documents and there wasn't a lot of information. There were so many questions and not enough answers in the documents provided to the public. I personally, and I would say many residents of Sacramento County, do not consent to give any bodily fluids. Or I know Dr. K, Dr. Casiri, said it's not DNA. I don't consent to give anything to public health, to give to California Department of Health, without my knowledge and without my consent for tracking and tracing of COVID. All the information that Dr. Casiri was saying, as I was listening, the public deserves to see that information, to read it, to analyze it, in order to make an informed decision. And I think that's what Supervisor Frost was essentially asking for, is we just want all the details in black and white so that we can read them and make an appropriate choice. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. That concludes your public comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Supervisor Frost.
Okay, so I think for the benefit of the supervisors who have not been through the last three years with me, I want to make a couple of comments. First, in the fall of 2019, Kerry Mullis, who was the creator of the PCR test, publicly stated that the test cannot be used for diagnostic purposes. He stated that the test identifies exosomes and molecules, but not whole cells, and that increasing amplification during the test would result in false positives. Two months later, he died, some think under suspicious circumstances. Later, we learned that the EUAs, and even the manufacturers' EUAs, stated that the PCR cannot be used for diagnostic purposes. In the end of March 2020, the CDC issued a directive authorizing medical doctors could use their judgment, not science. And if they perceive a patient has respiratory symptoms or symptoms that appear to be COVID, the doctor can write COVID as the cause of death on the death certificate. This was coupled with an added funding to hospitals for COVID cases and patients that were put on respirators for COVID. This is dangerous policy, dangerous public health policy, because it not only skews the COVID death numbers, it skews all the other death categories so that we don't have accurate information on the primary cause of death to base important public health priorities and policies. Early 2020, longtime traditional inexpensive medications and treatments for flu and respiratory illness like ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine and vitamin C and others were suspended, and people were told to go home, go back, if you come back to the hospital if you have trouble breathing. Many people died due to lack of early treatments, which had traditionally been the case, the traditional treatment over decades with people who got the flu. President Trump said scientists are working around the clock at warp speed to create a vaccine that would protect the public. He said, hurry, go get your shot. But we now know the U.S., China, and others have been working on gain-of-function and creating these shots over time. We also know that the Health and Human Services is operating under the Department of Defense. They have immunity. Big Pharma has immunity. They have no liability for damage to unsuspecting Americans. President Biden said, if you take the shot, you will not get COVID and you will not transfer COVID. Yet, we know now that the shot does not work. It does not protect you from contracting or transferring the so-called virus. We know that CDC is throttling or delaying and manipulating reporting in VAERS, which has always been the reporting system has always been the reporting system that was used to identify potentially harmful problems with new drugs. A patient could report to VAERS with a heart palpitation problem and later die from myocarditis and the follow-up report will never end up on VAERS. Over 30,000 people have reportedly died from this shot, according to VAERS, and the government agencies are still promoting it. We should immediately stop the shot. In the 70s, it took less than 50 adverse events in VAERS to pull a vaccine. Why haven't they stopped the vaccine? Manufacturing practices worldwide have always pulled questionable products with cars, with food. If you have salmonella or bad lettuce or a product that even made someone sick, they would recall it and it would be all over the news and they would stop it. Over three years now, we've been subjected to go home while we flatten the curve quarantine and if you are exposed, closed businesses, tracking and tracing, where and who were we with? Our legislature has tried to reduce our medical community to just IT technicians who do not scientifically or symptomatically observe symptoms and diagnosis. They go against the government, if they go against the government narrative, they lose their job, suffer suspension, or lose their license. Thankfully, a Superior Court judge in Southern California put a stay on that legislation that was just passed this last year. We've been subjected to extreme censorship. While we have been pressured and coerced into masking quarantine, isolation, loss of property, and loss of privacy, we could not ask questions or get answers. And if we did, we were featured as anti-vax or conspiracy theorists. People need information in order to make decisions. They call it informed consent. This agenda item, I saw red flags also. I agree with the caller, I don't know who the caller is, but I agree, there's red flags when you don't, when you're voting on something and you don't know the details of the contract. And contracts are, you know, I guess in statutory law, they're binding. I don't think we have enough information. I'm not even sure if I had more information, I could find a way to support this now, but I would like more information on the MOU. And I don't think it's, I think it has to be in the staff report. I don't, I don't think it's good to have the information come to our inbox last minute so that the public doesn't have the advantage of, you know, seeing it upfront and ahead of time. So I, what I'd like to do is pull this item for a future time and explore what does this mean? When I looked at, you know, looked up, what does genomic sequencing mean, it did say it had to do with DNA. So I still have questions. I'm not a doctor or a scientist, but I feel like I have a responsibility to protect the privacy, but more than, it's more than privacy now. It's privacy and property and it's human rights. And so Chair Desmond, I'd like to request that we pull the item and come back with more information, please.
Okay, so that's a motion Supervisor Frost?
Yes.
And before we take action on that, I know our county exec was queued up and as is Supervisor Turner.
Well, I just wanted to offer, you all have the MOU in your hands now, but it has not been timely. And should you choose to continue this to the next meeting to give both you and the public an opportunity to review the MOU, that would be acceptable.
Okay. Supervisor Turner?
Well, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Yes.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Okay. Then I will introduce a substitute motion for approval of item 13.
Second.
Okay, so we have the substitute motion.
The motion, just want to make, check my notes. The motion carries with Supervisor Desmond and Frost voting no.
Okay, so we have, I would have supported continuing it, but we have approved the item. So we'll move forward and now that we have the MOU, you'll have more opportunity to study and ask questions of staff.
Thank you Chair.
And I'd just like to say that because I received the MOU on the dais and had a chance to read it, my vote wouldn't have changed in continuing it, so.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Hume. Okay, that concludes our consent calendar. We can move on to, I believe, item 23.
Yes, item 23 is to adopt the resolution directing the Director of the Department of Transportation to pursue negotiations with Central California Traction Company to construct an at-grade railroad crossing.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning Members of the Board. Cameron Shue with Department of Transportation, Principal Civil Engineer. And we have a presentation this morning for the Waterman Road CCTC Crossing, which has been a project that has been on the books for a while. So I'm here today with the status update on the project, here to talk about one of the challenges we're having in delivering it and proposing a potential solution. So here's the project location, located along Waterman Road between Florin Road and Gerber Road. Waterman Road is an arterial that runs north-south, parallel to Elk Grove Florin Road and Bradshaw Road. The road's mostly been complete, but right at the CCTC Railroad right-of-way, there's about a 900-foot section of roadway that is still yet to be completed. So there's a longer accounting of the history of the project in the board letter, but to give a brief summary here, the roadway connection has been envisioned in the North Vineyard Station specific plan since 1998. The early phases of the North Vineyard Station development were constructed, or were conditioned to construct the project. But due to feedback from the railroad and some issues with delivery, DOT stepped in to work with our development partners to help deliver the project. Due to early indications from the railroad that they wanted to see an eventual grade separation there in the future, we did put some money in our countywide fee program to support a future at-grade crossing. But initially, there was not an expectation on our end that there'd be any issues starting with an at-grade crossing. But due to railroad coordination issues and realizing that the development on their own wasn't having success through no fault of their own, the Department of Transportation stepped in to help with the delivery of the project and coordinate with the railroad. We had several meetings with the railroad and came to this board for allocation of funds from the CFD as well as the fee program. The board did approve a contract with the railroad's preferred consultant, and we were hopeful with that direction, working with that consultant, we'd be able to make some progress. But unfortunately, the indication from the railroad and their consultant has been the railroad is not willing to accept anything other than a grade separation of this location, which is problematic for us because there's not existing rail tracks at the location. So we'd be either building an overpass or a tunnel underneath a non-existent rail track. And we anticipate that that structure would cost over $25 million versus just shy of $4 million for the at-grade crossing. So for the at-grade crossing, we do have funding for design and construction. We just don't have the funds to build the grade separation that the railroad is asking us for. That's really the only outstanding item preventing delivery of this project right now. And I have some additional images in the board materials, but this just kind of shows the discontinuous nature of the roadway today as well as the current state of the tracks. So what we're proposing is approaching the railroad with an agreement, and I have a letter at the end of the board materials where we're outlining four deal points that the county could potentially offer up to give the railroad the assurance that we will agree to separate this in the future, should they ever decide to improve the roadway and resume train service. But until that time, we're proposing an at-grade rail crossing. We'd build the concrete slab for the tracks, gatearms and warning lights if they so desire, as well as 100 yards of fencing in both directions. The at-grade crossing and the fencing has been proposed before and rejected, but we're hoping that by offering to guarantee the crossing in the future or else give up the roadway crossing, we hope that might give them the assurance that they need, that they won't suffer any disbenefit to allowing the crossing. So with that, we have a resolution outlining all of that as well as a proposal and letter for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Turner.
Thank you Chair. While this project is not in the district I represent, I did want to make mention of the fact that some of us have had experience with projects near or involving railroad crossings relative to the environmental review process and the cost of that. So what are we anticipating at this very early stage about especially the prospect of toxics contamination around the proposed grade crossing project area? Because that has been a cost center in the past, which was not anticipated at the beginning of the project, but certainly came back to haunt us, you know, later during the environmental review process.
So we do have some costs assumed for environmental review as well as the right-of-way issues. I don't know exactly how much is anticipated though for toxics.
Okay, I just, I just want to mention it because I think it's something that we should learn from our past about, and I see some nodding heads from our DOT staff, and I think they know which project I'm referring to. But especially as it relates to lead contamination, we need to really be mindful of that. So just want to put that on the record.
Yeah, I do want to say that the railroad has been a good partner with us on other projects and has worked with us to implement at-grade crossings at other locations. So we're hopeful that we can take a similar approach on this one.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks Cameron. Supervisor, thank you Supervisor Turner. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you Chair. As the one who does represent the area where this project is proposed, I can say that my office has already received complaints about it. It causes a lot of confusion because the Waterman Road exists on the north and exists on the south and yet does not connect in between. And so it creates some issue with deliveries and such. My questions center around the funding, both of the current proposed project as well as going to grade separation if at such time the railroad is restored to active use. First of all, I would assume that the proposed project is fully funded by the North Vineyard specific plan?
That's correct.
And then how about for the grade-separated project? Are we collecting fees that would pay for a fully grade-separated railroad crossing?
So a grade-separated railroad crossing is anticipated in the countywide SCTDF, which is the Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee. I don't know the exact dollar amount that's programmed into that program, but I know that we are collecting money from all development in the county that would go towards that project and paying our fair share for that.
So that's not borne just by the North Vineyard specific plan?
Correct. It's a regional roadway that has benefit circulation in the county in general, so it is part of the countywide fee program.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Hume. Any other comments from Supervisors? Seeing none, any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comments.
Wait, wait, wait. So we have two forms for being informed.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
On item 23.
I actually mentioned that earlier. We did have, I'm sorry. It's just taking me a second to get used to our new system. I apologize. We do have public comments. We have two speakers here. And so Ms. Lee Miller?
Thank you Cameron.
So hello, do I, I have some pretty pictures here. Is, do they go face up or face down?
They go face down. Let me see if, Lydia, would you mind helping Member Lee to shuffle her pages? Yeah. That way it doesn't.
They go face up, face up.
Lydia will set it up for you.
Okay.
Yeah. And then you can stand at the podium in between the mic.
Lee, I'm glad you're not here to talk about illegal fireworks.
Which are a problem in railroad.
Oh.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I know I only have two minutes, but I have some pictures to show you. My husband's going to be speaking next, so if I get cut off, he'll continue the entertainment portion of the show. Good morning Supervisors, my name is Lee Miller. I live out the corner of Tonypourt and Waterman. I urge the Board of Supervisors to vote yes on the SAC DOT resolution. As a Vineyard Delgrove citizen resident since 1988, Bradshaw has been my way to Highway 50 for 35 years. Bradshaw has an at-grade crossing near Dubar. The Bradshaw Crossing has been in place for at least 35 years and I've never seen a train travel through it. Phase two of the bullet train was designated for this, for these tracks, it was the emergency line. Two years ago, it was killed off. And the fact that CCT thinks that this phase two is going to be resurrected is ridiculous. The CCT is asking Waterman Crossing to go under the tracks for $25 million, for $25 million is disingenuous and a waste of public funds. I'll now show you how CCT tracks really look and other interesting facts that go on that we can see from our looking out into the field.
And you just let me know when to switch.
Okay. So this is a picture that was taken a couple of days ago of the tracks where at Poinsettia and Waterman, you can see the, that they're non-existent. This will show you the reason why it's non-existent. People drive back there and they take the railroad ties and the railroad tracks are actually falling off the hill. This is the other side on Poinsettia and Waterman, the tracks are non-existent. Throughout the field, you'll see that the tracks are non-existent. This is missing tracks at the basin area. These are also near the water basin. Next. The other issue that happens is that people want to cross the field and they actually cross through the fences.
Member Miller.
This is at Tonypourt and Waterman.
I'm sorry.
More to come.
Would you like to, the rest?
Yeah, the rest, there, my husband will continue the show.
Yeah, he, just do the pictures on his time, okay?
Hi, I'm Craig Vreken. I'm Lee's husband and I live at Tonypourt and Waterman. And you can show the rest of the pictures while I talk and just cycle through them there. That's the broken fence at Waterman Road. And one of my points is that this lack of a roadway is creating a safety issue. People are using, number one, residential streets to get from one point to the next, particularly Diamond Ranch Road. People are driving back, there's a construction vehicle driving through an empty field with dry weeds. People dump trash back there and so forth. And illegal fireworks. I know you didn't want to hear about that, but people are shooting off illegal fireworks back there in the weeds. And what I would like is for the board to propose a building moratorium in all of the areas affected by this lack of roadway. And the reason, and tell us issues resolved due to the safety and traffic concerns. And I think that the builders, the large building companies that benefit from roadways in our county and are building houses like crazy out there, should help lobby the railroad and the PUC to get this project completed and then they can resume building their houses. And one last point is that if the county eventually caves and builds a separated grade, there's somebody driving through the mud there and getting stuck and causing all kinds of ruckus. If the county does a separate grade there, they're going to be required to do a separate grade at South Watt, at Bradshaw, at Hedge, any other road that this railroad crosses. And one last thing, one of those pictures that you saw previously, there are two creeks in the immediate area where there is no bridge, there's like a 20-foot drop into the creek. There's no way that the railroad's going to go through there anytime soon. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, thank you. Any additional?
That concludes your public comments for.
Item 23.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll bring back to the board.
Chair, I would happily move the item.
Sure. Okay, we have a first and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 24.
Okay, for item 24, this is the Seeing Estates Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map Extension, a one-year tentative map extension for a property located at 9437 Gerber Road in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is a prior mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you. Good morning Jessica.
Good morning Chair Supervisors. Jessica Brandt, Principal Planner with Planning and Environmental Review, here to present this project to you. This is the Seeing Vesting Tentative Subdivision. This is the Sing Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map Time Extension 2. So the location of this map, it is approximately a half a mile west from the intersection of Bradshaw Road and Gerber Road. It is in the Vineyard Community. The project site is Zoned RD3, and it is in the North Vineyard Station specific plan as well. The surrounding land uses are mostly planned single-family residential subdivisions and associated facilities to the northeast and west. There's a lot with a rural home directly adjacent to the west, and then rural homes and vacant lots to the south across Gerber. Some site and entitlement history. The Sing Estates Tentative Subdivision Map was approved by the Board of Supervisors on January 31, 2007. The map was approved originally for a three-year time period, expiring January 31, 2010. Due to multiple statutory and discretionary time extensions, let's see here, statutory time extensions and one discretionary time extension, which was for five years, the current map expiration date was May 23, 2022. On December 21, 2021, the Board approved an amendment to the county code to allow an additional one-year time extension for maps where a five-year time extension was already approved, which is today's request. If the one-year time extension is approved today, the map's new expiration date would be May 23, 2023, which is in line with its existing expiration date. So again, before you is a time extension pursuant to Sections 222090 and 222095 of the Sacramento County Code to extend by one year the expiration date of the Sing Estates Tentative Subdivision Map. This map involves 14.4 acres, and it would be divided into 30 single-family residential lots, a landscape corridor lot, a parkway lot, and a drainage corridor lot. The environmental documentation is an addendum to a prior mitigated negative declaration, actually multiple addendums to a prior negative declaration, mitigated negative declaration. The current addendum did find that the project would continue to result in a less-than-significant impact with the implementation of mitigation measures already approved. Here's a quick exhibit of the map. The drainage lot is on the north side, and then the residential lots come off of Gerber on the south side. This project did go to the Vineyard CPAC, and they met on October 13, 2022. There were members in attendance, but we did not have enough for a quorum, so a vote was not taken. However, the members in attendance did provide comments in support of the time extension. And then we brought this project to the Planning Commission on November 14, 2022, and the Planning Commission recommended approval as well, four yes, zero no, one absent. A quick project analysis. Staff maintains that the subdivision remains consistent with the general plan policies, North Vineyard Station specific plan policies, and applicable development standards. The subdivision remains compatible with the surrounding context in the plan development. There are no significant environmental concerns, and the prior mitigated negative declaration and approved mitigation measures remain adequate and appropriate for the subdivision. And finally, the project was supported by the Vineyard CPAC and the Planning Commission. And therefore, staff is recommending approval, determining that the previous mitigated negative declaration and MMRP, together with the first addendum approved in May of 2017 and the current addendum prepared for the current request, are adequate and complete for the proposed project in compliance with CEQA and approve a one-year time extension for the approved Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map, resulting in a new expiration date of May 23, 2023, subject to findings and conditions. And just to note that this does mean that the applicant will need to hurry up on getting all of the materials into surveys to file their final map. My understanding is they do have an application in to file the map, and so that process has kicked off, and they will need to at least get the filed designation by May 23 of this year in order to continue on with their process. That ends my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Hopefully the applicant is listening. I know the applicant has not requested to speak on the matter. Is that correct?
He's confirmed with clerk staff that he does not plan or want to make any comments.
Okay. Any other public comment on this item?
We do not have, oh, sorry, we have one that just came in.
Okay. Supervisor Hume, you want to talk? Wait, no.
This is Ms. Miller.
It's a busy day today. So besides doing illegal fireworks, complaining about Waterman Road, I'm also on the Vineyard CPAC as Vice Chair. So lately, we've been discussing the Waterman roadway and not being non-existent. In one of our meetings at the Vineyard CPAC recently, we did decide to take former Supervisor Natoli's advice and start voting no on any extensions or any future projects that have to do with in-between Bradshaw and Florin Road and, excuse me, Florin Road and Bradshaw until Waterman gets built out. And the reason why is that it's adding more traffic to the area that's already congested. If you've ever tried to drive down Bradshaw to go to 50 or back home during commute times, it's just, it's getting out of hand. Waterman does need to be built out, and so going forward, anything in that general area on Gerber or Florin Road, we will be voting no on. Just to let you know. Thank you.
That concludes your public comments for item 24, and I'll take one quick check. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back to the Board. Supervisor Hume?
Yeah, thank you. First, I had a question of staff, and I apologize, I'm not used to the layout of the findings and conditions yet, and given that this was a pre-existing conditions on the project, and it's just a map extension, I didn't look too deeply. But in looking at the subdivision map and the aerials, there's, looks like a non-participating parcel, AG 20, in between this map and existing development. The existing development shows a stubbed-out road, speaking of road connections, shows a stubbed-out road coming across the top, and yet this project has a very long court on what I would assume is the west side of the map. And my question is, is there a plan to connect those roadways in the future? And/or is that stubout now go to nowhere? Because on that 20-acre parcel, or, excuse me, on the non, on the AG 20 parcel in between, I don't imagine it having a roadway through it. I think it's going to be served by the roadway that this map brings forward.
Well, who's going to take this one?
I think Todd is with the project manager, who might have more familiarity with that other project, so.
Thank you for the question. Supervisor Hume, Todd Smith, your planning director. We also have the project manager, Emma Patton, behind me. You are correct, that is a stub on the northwest portion of this project that would ultimately connect to that existing stub on the existing residential further to the west, but we do need that intervening property to participate in the future.
Great. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no more comments or questions from the Board. I would look for a motion.
Move approval of the extension?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Item 24, please vote.
All right. Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, staff. Moving on to item 25.
Item 25 is the San Juan Phase 1 to Conduct a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act Hearing. This is to authorize bond issuance and conditional loan commitment with Mutual Housing California in the amount of $20,700,000 for the project and environmental cleanup, and authorize a disposition and development agreement for the properties located at 5700 Stockton Boulevard and 5258 Young Street with Mutual Housing California.
Good morning. Christine Waggert with SHRA. This morning, we're asking for approval to issue mortgage revenue bonds, execute a disposition and development agreement with a seller carryback loan for the site that SHRA has owned for some time. Allocation of $1 million in environmental cleanup and a commitment of a $20 million loan in county funds for the acquisition, construction, and permanent financing of the San Juan apartments by Mutual Housing. In addition, this evening, we'll be requesting the City Council approve $2 million loan commitment and land disposition for the project as well. Sorry. As background, between 2008 and 2010, SHRA purchased eight parcels located at Stockton and Young Street, totaling five and a half acres. The sites include three large county parcels in the unincorporated county and five smaller parcels in the city. The parcels were purchased with former redevelopment and neighborhood stabilization funds. In November 2016, SHRA received approval for a vacant lot disposition strategy, which included the San Juan site, and a request for proposals was issued to solicit an affordable housing developer. A section of the award of the project to Mutual Housing California, and their proposal for the site included family, workforce, and permanent supportive housing. Given funding limitations, the project has since been phased. The first phase and the subject of this report includes seven parcels, five of which are in the city and two in the county. The Phase 1 site is 4.2 acres, and SHRA will clean up the contaminated soil on one of the county parcels prior to selling the property. The project is 113 units comprised of one, two, and three bedrooms. Incomes will range between 30% and 60% of area median income, and the development includes 12 buildings, a community room, playground, and swimming pool. The total project cost is $75 million. In addition to the $22 million in SHRA funding, financing for the project includes low-income housing tax credits, smud rebate, and a conventional loan, and the project was awarded $2 million in Green Means Go from the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. The funding will pay for a portion of the off-site improvements. The developer, Mutual Housing, will also serve as property manager and provide residence services at the site. The second phase of development includes the remaining county parcel located at 5716 Stockton and expected to include approximately 70 units of permanent supportive housing. Staff anticipates returning for approval on that second phase later this year. This slide helps to illustrate the city parcels in yellow and the county in blue. In addition, you can see Phase 1 of the project, which is being funded with the actions in this report. Again, we hope to return for approval of Phase 2 in the coming months. So in conclusion, staff's recommending approval of funding and land disposition for the San Juan apartments by Mutual Housing, and SHRA and mutual staff are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Christina. Look to my board members, see if there's any comments or questions. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. Nice to see you in person, by the way.
Nice to see you.
Only had a Zoom briefing with you. I just wanted to make a comment from the dais, simply that the item that we approved at the last meeting, calling for a shelter crisis, that this project plays into that. You know, the more housing that we can provide at whatever income strata we're talking about, specifically in lower income and affordable units, helps to alleviate some of the pressures that we're feeling. So I just say that as an aside, so that our staff, as we move forward, does what we can do to streamline and expedite and make this go smoothly, quickly, easily, and get these units out of the ground as soon as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Supervisor Kennedy?
Are there any public comments, Chair?
Madam Clerk?
We do have public comment on item 25.
Public comment first? Okay, we'll take the public comment, and then Supervisor Kennedy.
And so I will call Parker Evans to the podium.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Supervisors. My name is Parker Evans. I'm a Housing Development Project Manager at Mutual Housing California. Been working on the San Juan project for a few years now. Mutual Housing is tremendously excited to bring 113 units of affordable housing to the Stockton Boulevard stretch there, affordable, safe housing for communities and for families. I'd also like to congratulate the county on the recent pro-housing designation by HCD, and we see this project as an extension of the county's commitment to providing affordable housing. As the staff report indicated, a portion of the site is in the city, a portion of the site is in the county, so the entitlement process has been very long and involved. And I'd really like to thank county staff, SHRA staff, and especially Supervisor Kennedy for the high degree of coordination necessary to get through what I think is going to be one of the more complicated entitlement packages that you'll see. So thanks again for your support. We always value working in jurisdictions like Sacramento County with a deep commitment to affordable housing. I'll be around if you guys have any questions. Thank you.
And that concludes your public comments.
Okay, then I'll turn it over to Supervisor Kennedy.
First, I want to thank Christine, and LaChelle's here somewhere. There you are. Yeah, you know, this has been a long process. You know, Parker, thanks for being here. I will say that with the complexities of this project, and I'm the one who's usually the least patient you'll meet, you know, the process hasn't been as long as it could have been because of all of that interagency cooperation and because of the great work that you're doing and also the good work of the Mogaveiro Architects. So with that, I will enthusiastically, you know, say that this is a huge weight off of my shoulders over the past several years. And really, I mean, one of the things that's fantastic about this project is not only it'll be reusing a site that really was a challenge, but it also fits in well with the mix of what we've got on Mutual on the Boulevard and Cornerstone, and this has a real family focus to it, and I think that's important to maintain that housing mix. So with that, I will move staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, and before we have a motion, a second, and before we vote, Supervisor Serna?
I just wanted to say I appreciate both Patrick's comments about this project. It happens to lie very near the borders between Districts 2 and 1, and I think it's going to serve that overall neighborhood very well, in addition to many of the attributes that have already been mentioned in terms of our overall objective to maximize our affordable housing inventory here in Sacramento County. So I'm enthusiastically providing that second.
Okay, motion, a second. I'll add my thanks and congratulations as well to SHRA. I agree, couldn't agree more with my colleagues. This is a very exciting project, and also congratulations to Supervisor Kennedy, and want to applaud him for all his work on this. So please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, moving on to item 26.
Item 26 is to adopt a resolution affirming the Board of Supervisors' direction to staff regarding improvements to the county's development review process.
Okay, good morning. Good morning, Mr. DeFonte.
Good morning, Dave DeFonte, Deputy Kenny Executive of Community Services. So I don't have any slides for you this morning, so unfortunately, all you have to look at is me. Hopefully, we can get through this rather quickly, but, you know, I'm actually really happy to be on the heels of the last item because I think this actually plays directly into some of the conversations your board just had. So I'm hoping to accomplish two things today. One is to present a draft resolution to your board for your consideration. It's intended to capture your support of development process improvement initiatives that we are working on, also capture your why, why this is important to you and the county, and then your expectations moving forward. And the second thing I wanted to accomplish once we go through the resolution is provide you a brief summary of process improvements we have, we're working on right now, as well as some culture change initiatives as well. So first, the resolution, as I think many or all of you know, I've been in my role for about eight months now, and one of my key focuses is to work on our development processes in general with staff and our customers, and look towards improvements that speak to the timeliness of review, ensuring a predictable and consistent process, and then a concerted focus on customer service. So the draft resolution in front of you today was actually a recommendation out of the report Mr. Carriage provided to the county back in November, I'm sorry, September, and that we discussed with your board at a board retreat back in November a couple of months ago. I really love the idea of this resolution. I think it's very. I think it's very powerful and important to set very clear expectations and direction from your board to staff, including myself, to our customers and the community at large. And I think a resolution of this kind can really help in a lot of those regards to make it clear what we're trying to achieve and why. So the resolution is intended to capture your support, again, for the initiative, the why regarding its, the importance behind it, and it's really intended to be your voice. So I had the challenge of drafting a resolution, trying to capture your five individual voices into one resolution that speaks to all of your whys together. So that's my big caveat here. If there's any questions, comments, proposed revisions, I certainly understand and can modify it, because at the end of the day here, I want to make sure that this resolution captures your voice well. You know, I've drafted this on feedback based on what I've heard you say individually and as a board over the last year, having come back to the county in February of last year, things I've heard you say in other meetings I've been in, and the myriad of discussions we've had individually over the last year. So I'm hopeful I captured it correctly, and we'll see. So once adopted, this will really be our North Star moving forward. This is going to help us guide all of our initiatives, including, again, process improvement as well as culture as we march forward. The goal statement in this resolution is pretty bold. It essentially says, "We want to be the best place to build in the region," and it says, "We want to be the best place to build in the region for all customers." And this is a conversation I've had with staff on a number of occasions. You know, when Mr. Carriage provided his analysis and report, he talked to a subset of our customers, and I think the feedback we got was very important and valuable. What I'm saying here today is, my hope is to improve our development processes for all customers, for the mom and pops that are trying to renovate their house, or build a pool, or build an ADU for an aging family member, for our public partners trying to do road projects, SMF forwards, sewer projects, water projects, for our nonprofit partners that we just spoke to just a few moments ago, trying to pull off affordable housing projects, which are incredibly complicated to do, and then to our bigger developers as well, trying to do infill projects in commercial corridors in our EJ communities, and building new communities as well to serve the needs of current and future Sacramentoans. So before I jump into this resolution, I want to share that, I did share this draft resolution with the Building Industry Association, with the Regional Builders Exchange, and the Sacramento Housing Alliance, and I see at least Mr. Norm here today, and I believe we received a letter from Tim Murphy from the Builders Exchange as well.
So Dave, before you get into specifics of the resolution, okay, you want to hold off? I'll ask my colleagues, you want to wait until he's done with his presentation or anything? Okay. You will hear if you've captured the voice of all five supervisors, because I think everybody's going to be telling you.
All right. I look forward to that, and I'll keep my fingers crossed. So with that, I just wanted to walk through the resolution, and if there's any questions, however you want to handle it, on the fly or after the fact, it's certainly fine with me. So the first five whereas's in the resolution is really intended, intending to capture your why. So it starts off with a statement, "Whereas the county is facing an unprecedented housing supply and affordability crisis, your board desires to positively affect new housing production in the county to meet these criseses." The second whereas is that you desire to encourage and facilitate equitable investment in and economic development of existing communities, again, particularly within those aging commercial corridors we've talked about for many years, and environmental justice communities, looking for that context appropriate, and certainly high-quality infill development within those areas. The third whereas is that you would desire to facilitate responsible development of new complete communities with a mix of housing type, everything from, again, affordable housing like we just talked about, to affordable by design, some of those smaller product types, and again, across the spectrum of product types. The fourth whereas is that you're confident, and I certainly am confident, that we can do so in a manner that can help us meet our local climate goals, that can help us meet the state's climate goals, to protect the environment, and to involve the public in all of our discretionary applications that come forward. You know, I've had experiences around this region, both professionally and otherwise. I am extremely confident that this county can meet this goal. And whereas the board believes to achieve all of these goals, we have to provide excellent customer service, exceptional customer service, have process in place that are efficient and easy to navigate, and be known as a trusted and helpful partner to our customers, again, all customers. This is not about one subset, this is about serving everybody well. In turning the page, now therefore let it be resolved, there's a number of resolved statements here that really get to the meat of the matter. The first one, again, is that pretty bold goal statement, that the board wants the county to be known as the best place to build in this region, and strongly supports process improvements to better serve all of our customers. That the board directs the county executive and myself to expedite any changes necessary to make that happen, that the board directs staff to implement process improvements to help achieve these goals, and to do so with a sense of urgency, again, back to that first whereas relative to the acute housing crisis, both in terms of supply and affordability. And this is really important in that I've had a lot of discussions with staff, well, what does a good process improvement look like? What does a good process look like? And I think we all know it when we feel it, but providing a level of definition here, I think, is important, and this, number four, attempts to do that. So good process improvements would be ones that lead to processes that are predictable, consistent, easy to understand, timely and efficient, reduce complexity and eliminate requirements when possible, are consistent with industry best practices, and for lack of a better term, stealing from other jurisdictions that have good processes in place that are known as good places to do business by our customers. Include customers in problem solving and decision making. Ensuring the level of detail that we as staff are requesting is appropriate for any given stage of development. Allowing for parallel review and processing whenever feasible, and we'll talk about that a little later. Offering clear timelines and transparency to our customers. Reducing silos and increasing communication, and providing routine opportunities to solicit customer feedback to address complaints, and also to hear the good things that we're doing as well. And I know planning actually has a process in place where we do routinely get customer feedback. They timely respond to complaints, but, and they actually forward, to me, a lot of the good things that our customers are already saying about us. Number five is that the county, the board wants the county to provide unparalleled customer service, and again, this section speaks to, what does good customer service feel like? What does it mean to this board? It would be known, it would be, look like being known for interacting with customers in a friendly, helpful, and communicative manner, being collaborative with our customers, embracing our roles as facilitators and proactively helping our customers meet the necessary regulations, ordinances, et cetera. And this one's really important. None of what I'm saying here means that we're looking to not uphold your board-adopted policy, or the myriad codes and regulations that we are charged with upholding. It means helping our customers, proactively facilitating their success in meeting those codes, regulations, et cetera. It's about being creative and solution-oriented, and having a problem-solving mindset, and being viewed by our customers as a trusted partner, somebody that will help them, again, noodle through some of the really tough stuff we have to figure out when working through land development proposals. It means staff coming prepared to meetings, to share good information with our customers, responsive feedback, and really good guidance, again, to help them through our processes. Offering options to achieve customers' goals, even if their initial proposal isn't viable. I did a stint at the front counter. Sometimes, when somebody comes to you and says, "I have a piece of property, I want to do X," the answer can be no, without a zone change or something else that could be expensive and complicated. But the discussion doesn't have to end there. It could be no, but here's what you can do, right? And I know we have really great people at the front counter that do just that. And responding to all phone calls and emails within one business day. Again, the board expects staff to seek continuous improvement, and the board would expect staff to embrace changes intended to accomplish these goals. Seven and eight here is really near and dear to my heart. Seven speaks to the board expecting that we empower staff to make decisions appropriate for their position, be innovative and creative to help solve problems, and to take risks to facilitate development, reasonable risks, and that in doing so, some mistakes are going to be made. It's just the nature of the business, and that when mistakes are made, when a reasonable risk is taken, this board is understanding of that, and will have their back, and you would expect that managers and supervisors do the same. And this is a conversation that I've had with staff on many occasions. This is not easy, right? Getting out of your comfort zone, putting your, you know, sticking your head out, and taking a risk to help a project through is not always an easy thing to do. That is an expectation that I have of staff, and that if a reasonable risk is taken and a mistake is made, that I will have their back, and I've told them just that. Eight is also really important to me. We have really good staff here. This states that the board supports investment in our staff through training and other development oppor, professional development opportunities, and celebrating their successes when they are successful. And that's something that, you know, I take on my shoulders. I want to make sure that we're messaging out the really good work that staff is doing, because there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that's incredibly positive, that frankly, we're not always good about sharing out to your board, or to the community, or to our customers. So I take that responsibility on, that's something I'm going to be pushing for in the future, to make it known, the great work that our staff is doing. Nine is a tough one, right? The board will strive to provide adequate staffing and resources to accomplish these goals. I know you've done just that over many years, and I know, though, you have many budgetary pressures on you in any given fiscal year, but this would be certainly a desire of ours to make sure that we're adequately staffed, et cetera, to make sure we're carrying out the good work that you'd like us to. Ten is leveraging external assistance through consultants and others is necessary, especially in these times when it's so hard to find staff for some of these positions. And then obviously, leveraging grant funding whenever possible to help build the infrastructure necessary to serve our communities. Eleven is that the board would generally support amendments to county codes and regulations that allow for more ministerial and by right development, more approvals at the staff level or lower hearing bodies, and other changes that make it easier to do business in the county. I know your board's done, you know, made a number of code changes over the years to do just that, and frankly, that's in large part why we are now one of a very small handful of pro-housing designated communities in the state. And then 12, this is essentially a direction from you to me, that you would expect us to establish and track meaningful metrics to measure our progress, and to report back to the board regarding process improvements at least every six months. And I plan to do just that. I actually, we're building right now, this is up to 10 pages right now, of process improvements that we either are working on or plan to work on in the future. Once this is fully fleshed out, I'm going to be sharing it with staff as well as your board, to hold us all accountable to each other. So you'll be seeing this moving forward, well in advance of when I come back to you in six months, to share progress we've made. So before going any further, are there any questions, comments, proposed revisions to the resolution?
How much more do you have, Dave?
Well, other than sharing some things that we're working on, that's it on the resolution. But I would like to, if there's, after any discussion about the resolution, share some recent successes with you.
Turn to my board members. You want Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. Let me say this, Dave, that, you know, I can't speak for my colleagues, but they're lined up to every one of them speak. But I will say, from my point of view, I think you did a masterful job of taking such, you know, disparate opinions and direction, and, you know, when we walked away from the workshop at the, you know, when we first heard this item, you know, I wasn't sure you were going to be able to do it. You did it, in my opinion. And, you know, we can be a squirrely bunch that's not real clear sometimes, and I think you distilled through what was said at that meeting, and a lot of meetings leading up to it, to come up with something that I think is really groundbreaking. The, I will also commend Ms. Edwards. When you came on as county executive, you admittedly did not have a lot of experience in this area, and what a good leader does is find, you know, where you can put the right people in the right places to, you know, make up for that. And you clearly listened to this board. The, you know, my perspective comes from many years of dealing with the building industry, and I will tell you that, you know, even back when I was, back many, many years ago, when I was over at the city, was the time when everybody, you know, all the builders and developers said, "I won't do work, I will never do business in the city of Sacramento again." And, you know, Buzz Oats was the most famous and loud, but there were many others, and they said, "Instead, I will work with the county." Well, over the years, that has done a 180, and largely because of the leadership of Mr. Carriage while he was at the city, which is, again, I think I give, you know, Ms. Edwards great credit for recognizing that and bringing him in, you know, an outside point of view is always helpful, and I think that the results are, you know, crystal clear here. So I guess I don't have a lot to poke at, because I think this is a fantastic step forward. Not only are we, you know, we like to say that the county is now open for business, but it's not just about that. As important as that is, it's also through this document, you know, we're addressing climate change, we're addressing complete communities, we're addressing accountability. So I, you know, I just, I can't say enough, I think I've said enough, but thank you for your good work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first, let me start by adding my thanks to you, Dave, for doing a terrific job with this, and thank you again for taking the time to meet with each of us, to get our impressions of the working draft, and to provide you some input along the way. I will say that, as someone who basically had Chris Norm's position 25 years ago in the Bay Area, for the Bay Area's equivalent of the BIA, if we at the Home Builders Association back then would be sitting in a gallery of a Board of Supervisors for, you know, any of the nine counties in the Bay Area, where staff was proposing this kind of resolution before a Board of Supervisors, I would have thought it was somewhat, you know, apocalyptic, because it was, you know, in the midst of a then separate housing crisis as it related to the then dot-com boom, and jobs, housing imbalance in the nine counties. And it was always very difficult, in the face of that, as an advocate for the building industry, home building industry, to really understand what the value, the values were of elected decision-makers when it came to something as important as local government's place in entitling landowners with the permission and ability to construct shelters. So I think, as was stated by my colleague, I think this is fairly revolutionary in a very, very positive way, and I think it really, the thoroughness that you've applied in having gone through, as you did, many of the whereas's in the resolve, I think, show the level of thoughtfulness that really went into this, to this document. I do have, I have one suggestion, but before I get to that, I do want to say, and I think I agree with you, I think you made mention of it, I think probably one of the most important sections of the resolution is in the resolve, and it's paragraphs seven through nine, which, again, relate to staff, and how best to empower staff. They're the face of this organization when it comes to builders and their, you know, their associates, their representatives, when they come to our building department or planning department to seek, again, the permission and ability to provide shelter, and to have kind of a very, very clear understanding of our, quite frankly, our responsibility as electeds to continue to empower staff to be the decision-makers we want them to be, I think is really, that part of the resolution that really stands out the most for me. And then finally, the suggestion I want to make has to do with staffing, and that is, you know, I don't want to see this resolution just, you know, sit on, you know, sit on a shelf somewhere, or perhaps for you, framed on the wall. But I think it can be used as an important tool or step in the recruitment process that you mentioned. So in other words, I think, assuming we do pass this, and I think, you know, we're going to wholeheartedly do that in a minute, I think actually presenting this to prospective employees in our community development continuum, planning, building, environmental review, I employees in our community development continuum, planning, building, environmental review, I think would clearly give those applicants kind of a good, clear understanding of not just expectations here in Sacramento County, but again, our, our value set when it comes to something as important as housing production. So I would hope that that becomes part, part of your toolbox to bring good people to the very important responsibility of how best to do that, to permit and provide shelter. So again, want to thank you for a terrific effort. I want to thank the building community. You mentioned that you went to them as well to get their input. So I think it's fair to say this is a product of all of us really thinking carefully about how best to put forth this, this value set in, in ink and be accountable in the future. That's what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Frost?
Oh, I just want to thank you, Dave, for this. Thanks for taking the time to come to my office and spend an hour with me and allow me to have the input. I, I want to say I was very surprised. Supervisor Kennedy said it well. It was masterful, the way you pulled us all together with, you know, we all had the same thing in mind, we want better service, but how do we accomplish that? And what I know, what was very notable to me was that you found a way to do it that made every, all parties accountable, including the board. To say, you know, you have to be willing to let people, if you want people to fly and make hard decisions, you have to be willing to let them, work with them if there's mistakes and not beat them back down. You didn't say it like that, but my words, not yours. I'm just saying. It, it's the difference between top-down leadership and inspirational let-them-fly leadership. And I want to commend you for that and thank you for that, because since the day I got elected and was, became onto the board in 2017, I'm pretty sure Chris Norum might have been the first person in my office with something we could do to make our, you know, how can we help make customer service better? And I was getting calls from people from the very first week. That was one of the top priorities for me. And so I also want to, I want to say that, and Edwards, maybe this isn't your background, but you're, you're masterful at managing what I would consider to be, at times, occasionally a diverse board. And I, I really appreciate the way you do it. Pulling together, pulling all of us together with an understanding in a resolution like this is, I think is going to end well. And then I just want to say, my background wasn't development, but it was finance. And I financed, you know, construction and takeout loans. And I know what it's like to be on the other side of delays and how it can cost people a lot of money. And so it means, this means a lot to me. And so I think everyone else, I won't say anymore. I'm, I'm supportive and I don't have any changes. I've already made my suggestions, which you incorporated, and I thank you for it. So thank you, and congratulations on your recent award.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's important that we add our thoughts to this, because this is a resolution of the board, giving you and your staff, all the way down the line, the permission to, to, to think creatively, to be better, to take risks, to not be so risk adverse. And even though I didn't have the opportunity on the front end necessarily of this process, I do want to appreciate whatever listening device you had on my phone when I was talking to constituents, because you've incorporated much of what I've said needed to happen at the county. And when people ask me, you know, how am I finding my new role? Obviously, I begin with the enormity of the work and the myriad number of departments and folks that I'm having to meet with and kind of the, the whole drinking from a fire hose concept. But I tell them that the most pleasant surprise I've found so far was the, the desire and the efforts that are already underway for a cultural shift within the organization that was a long time coming, is very important, and already feels like it's paying dividends and, and will improve with morale, will improve with sort of the outward facing aspect of this organization, will break loose some of the cartilage that has built up over the years. And so, you know, I, I just want to say that, as has been mentioned, this resolution is only words on paper. If it doesn't match expectation, actions, commendation for people that really get it and strive to do more and continuously improve, as well as forgiveness for those who, who take that shot and miss, that they don't get discouraged and, and punished for trying to do something a little bit different. So it's, it really is a mind shift in how we approach. And, and I appreciate what you said, because there's nothing wrong with starting with no but, or yes and, so that we can, we can explore the possibilities and really dig down on, on how to provide that level of customer service for people. Because the obstacles that we put in place, even if they're hurdles and not barriers, have a value to them, both in literal cost as well as in time delay, as frustration for the other, for the end user. And so to, to be able to clear those out of the way and really, you know, start again with that idea of, we work for you. And that's one of the things that I'd like to sort of end on here, is it's the fifth whereas that is, is most important to me. And that's because at the end of the fifth whereas, it speaks that this is not just for the development community, which is important. But when you're coming forward with a couple hundred acre specific plan or a, or a big tentative map, you know, that's, there's intricacies and complexities to that that are going to take some time. But if I am a homeowner, a resident, a whomever, that's just trying to have an interaction with their government and get their permission to go do what they want to do to improve whatever they want to improve, that should be, if not enjoyable, at least a painless process. And so I think it's important that we call that out, that this, this is meant for everybody that, that comes through those doors to do business with the county. And, and so with that, you know, I would happily support if there's a motion on the table, but I, I just think this is the type of thing to do to empower staff to, to, to think more creatively, to, to be willing to take those risks, and to recognize that, that ultimately, we do work for the folks who probably never show up in these chambers. And so I just, I really appreciate the effort that is being undertaken here. And I also commend my colleagues here, before I got here, for supporting this effort and, and bringing Mr. Carriage in to provide a report that has tangible deliverables on how to improve as an organization. And I commend staff for taking that to heart and bringing items such as this forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. And before I make my comments, Dave, did you know, were you going to be talking about some specific, you know, kind of measures to start executing on this resolution?
Yeah, I did want to spend a few moments talking about generally what we're working on right now and what you'll be seeing in the future.
Why don't you go ahead and do that, and then I'll, I'll make some comments after that.
Sure, absolutely. So, you know, we are working on a lot of near-term improvements, and you're going to see and have already seen some changes put in place. But, you know, first I wanted, and actually, this is very fortunate, given the conversation we just had, I, I wanted to talk just for a moment about culture. You know, true and lasting culture change takes a while, right? And Ann has, you know, obviously spearheaded an effort countywide to do just that for the entire county, and I think that's paying huge dividends. And frankly, that's helped tremendous, tremendously in our recruiting already, and I appreciate Supervisor Serna's suggestion earlier about using the resolution in our recruiting, and I actually plan to do just that. But I think it's, you know, because of Ann and her leadership and some of the changes we're making holistically across the county, why we're seeing some people come here that maybe wouldn't otherwise have come join the county family. So it is absolutely paying dividends, and we do intend to tee off that larger effort specific to development review processes. You know, we're, we're focused on building a really positive culture, a collaborative, collaborative culture internally, supporting and growing our staff. And I heard great things from your board today along those lines. Again, excellent customer service, problem solving, all the things that we've talked about towards building Sacramento. And that's what I, I'm telling my team and having conversations with our team, everything we do has an impact on our customers, but also our built environment. We are the ones in, in coordination with the board and our customers that are building Sacramento, and I take that responsibility, you know, with a, a lot of importance, because we are shaping our community for my kids, right? Who I hope can afford to build a, you know, own a home here at some point. Although, as I've told staff many times, you know, according to them, and they're 11 right now, they're never leaving our house, but I assume that'll change at some point, and they'll want a place of their own. You know, part of this culture change is promoting and hiring excellent people. And we've had a tremendous luck in doing just that over the last year. I've spent a lot of my time here in the last 11 months on interview panels and finding the right people for the right seats on the bus. And just really quickly, I mean, Troy Givens, our new community development director, absolutely fantastic, right? Comes at things with that economic development mindset and problem-solving mindset. Todd Smith, who's grown into the planning director position faster and better than I would have ever even dreamed. And I, I've known Todd for 20 years and have a lot of faith in him, but the way he's taken the reins of the planning department has just been tremendous. Claudia Wade, who just started as our new county engineer, replacing Bob Davison after many decades in the seat, has hit the ground absolutely sprinting. Greg Mahoney, our chief building official, again, another hire just this year, this past year, really creative, reasonable building official. That's, you know, a notoriously tough position to hire really good people into, and boy, he's just, you know, fit that bill perfectly. Jenny Ramirez, who you're not going to see very often, but an admin chief in our community development department, again, is just making tremendous changes within the department to support those other divisions. And that work is so important, you don't see it here at the dais, but you feel it in the product that the rest of the divisions put out. And those are just the hires, four of six division chiefs and a new director in one department in one year. I mean, you saw Cameron Chu up here earlier from DOT, he's a rising rock star in DOT. We have excellent new people and people that have been here for decades, all coming together to work on these initiatives. I'm really proud of staff and what they've been able to do. So, you know, we have a lot of other recruitments in place, we're going to keep putting the right people on the right seats of the bus and moving forward. So with that, just wanted to give you a brief overview of what we're working on. This is not an exhaustive list, you'll, you'll get this exhaustive list here soon, and we'll deliver that to you once it's fully fleshed out. You know, I'm really proud of staff for pushing a lot of this forward. It's not easy when a new guy comes in and starts talking change, right? I've been in those staff seats before, when people like me came in talking the way I am. So I really appreciate them doing what they've done thus far. And I'm already seeing and feeling changes. I'm hearing it from our customers. So with that, first, pro housing designation, we've already talked about it today, tremendously proud, one of, you know, I can count the jurisdictions on two hands that are pro housing designated across the state. So huge accomplishment of planning and environmental review and your board for making necessary policy and code changes to secure that designation. So kudos to all of you. Development Oversight Committee, we've had a lot of conversations with the Building Industry Association. We've pulled together a monthly meeting with them and a whole slew of different customers that attend that meeting. This sort of industry working group is going to be used to vet new processes, updates, et cetera, moving forward. We're working with them to define exactly what we're going to be taking to them over time. So we have a monthly, hour-long meeting, but then we're going to spin off subgroups from there to have more detailed conversations as necessary about particular code updates or fee updates or whatever may come across our desk. Development Process Managers, I know this was something we talked about at our November Board Retreat. We have two new development process managers who are going to be starting here shortly, Chelsea Bowman and Rick Blaz, who frankly, have been doing this work at Metro Air Park for a number of years now, and doing an absolutely fantastic job at it. So we're going to be moving their positions from economic development to community development, and their first order of business is going to be to build this program. I've mentioned before that the city of Sacramento has a similar function. They have eight development process managers, and that's just for picking up projects post-planning phase through improvement plans and building, et cetera, for projects valued at a million dollars or more. And they have eight positions for that. So the first order of business for them is going to be building this program, you know, talk about, figure out exactly how they're going to interact with staff. They're not going to replace project managers in each individual jurisdiction, but help coordinate and herd the cats to make sure that there's a single point in contact and decisions can be made timely. So I have a ton of faith that they're going to do an excellent job in that. We have three more positions as well that your board provided as part of final budget of last year, and we're working with DPS right now to create a job class so we can hire those positions as needed as well. Acela Training and Review, I think as I had mentioned at our October kickoff with staff, somebody in the back of the room of about 200 people said, how many people use Acela? And it was maybe half the room. And then he said, how many people have been trained on Acela? And it was maybe five or six. So that, to me, spoke to the need to build a training program, not just for existing staff, but onboarding, whoops, onboarding new staff and then refreshing staff over time. So we asked for staff volunteers, again, kind of that ground-up empowering staff to, to build these programs. We have about 20 staff volunteers that are going to be helping us build an Acela training program, as well as review what's working and what's not with Acela, and either make changes to Acela, it's sort of our system of record for the development process, and make changes to have it better fit us, or make changes to us to better fit the system. So we just had a kickoff meeting with our Acela vendors a couple of weeks ago to get that going. Number of things going on in individual departments and divisions, building permits and inspection. We're implementing a new electronic document review system, preparing a development guide that'll organize all of our codes, rules, regulations in one easy-to-follow document, developing flat permit fees for things like kitchen and bathroom remodels, rather than having them on a valuation basis, again, just simplify things. And I know this is big for Mr. Mahoney, reorganizing our, our violations program to be less punitive, less time-intensive for our staff, and really focused on bringing people into compliance rather than beating them over the head for lack of compliance, for lack of a better term. Construction Management Inspection, they're reviewing our punch list procedures in consultation with particularly customers at Metro Air Park to make sure that we can close out projects timely. Because if you try to close out a project, oftentimes, there's just little things you need to do before you get your final certificate of occupancy. We want to make that process easier to navigate. They're pushing the use of iPads in the field to share real-time information amongst, amongst inspectors, updating our county standard construction specifications, et cetera. County Engineering, again, with Claudia Wade coming in, she's launched a number of initiatives, a couple that I've heard many times from our customers that need some attention. Our public facilities financing plan guidelines are now being updated to be more consistent with industry standards and take into account a lot of the feedback we've got from our customers. Something as simple as allowing for electronic signatures on final improvement plans. We're still requiring wet signatures. That might not sound like a time-consuming thing, but it can be, shuffling around paper to get those signatures. So we're working very quickly to have e-signatures for that process. We're also looking at updating our breaking ground guideline, or guidebook. I don't know if you're familiar with this, I think it was last updated in 2013. This was sort of the, the manual we gave to customers back in the day. It's incredibly helpful, tells you the basics for when you need a building permit, who to contact, and it has names and contact information, so we're working to update this as well. Water Resources has a number of things moving forward. We talked about parallel processing earlier. We're actively transitioning to that right now, where we would be doing parallel review of improvement plans along with the drainage study. So rather than waiting for one to be done before the next to start, we're going to do them at the same time. That can lead to some complexities, so that, you know, we'll, we'll modify as we need to as we go along, but that's huge strides right there. We're working to modify our approach on stormwater quality requirements and low-impact development requirements as well, to make sure our approach is consistent with other jurisdictions, and Michael's helping take the lead on that. We're also, again, this is in the weeds, but important stuff, where we're developing an approach that would reduce delays when a variance from the state water board requirements regarding separation of utilities is requested. So sometimes a water line and sewer line, they need to be X inches away from each other. If we can't get that separation exactly, there needs to be a variance requested from the state. So, and those variances are typically always approved from the state, or maybe not always, but generally. So we're going to be submitting those variance requests to the state way earlier in the process to avoid delays on the backend. Apparently, Mr. Gualco's happy about that. And then Planning and Environmental Review, we have, just as of, a couple of weeks ago, your board approved four consulting contracts for environmental services, so we can be engaging consultants for SEQA documents. That will be a tremendous help, because we have at least 12 vacancies in planning right now that we're now that we're still trying to fill. And again, huge kudos to Planning for taking the lead on what became our pro housing designation. So that is a huge mouthful. I promise not to do that to you every time. I will give you this Excel spreadsheet moving forward, and that will, again, hold me accountable to you and be something that we can share with our customers as well. So that's really what I wanted to do today, just give you a snapshot of what we're working on. You know, again, to me, this is about empowering staff, like we talked about before, harnessing their expertise and their passion. We have excellent staff here. They see the problems better than anybody else, and empowering them to do something about it is that next step. And that's where we're headed right now. And finally, I just wanted to leave you with a thought. When we had our first quarterly meeting with all development review staff last week, I shared the resolution with them, and we had a good discussion with them. And thanks to our chair, who came and made some comments, you will all be getting invites to attend future quarterly meetings as well, if you'd like. And I shared with them, I basically challenged them and said, "Sometime in the next three months before we meet again, I challenge each and every one of you to take a risk, take a creative lead, or challenge a norm," and volunteer to report back at our next quarterly meeting. What did you do? How did it go? Just as part of encouraging people, again, to take those risks, to do something outside of the box. And I would challenge your board to do the same. If there's anything that crosses your mind about how we could be doing something different, better, et cetera, do something creative. Please let me know. We're all ears and certainly happy to engage. So with that, thank you very much. I took a lot of your time this afternoon. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much, Dave. You know, I think you, I appreciate all that additional information. You had us at hello, if you were picking up on that. But, you know, we are trying to shorten up these meetings, but, but thank you for, thank you. This is, it's, this is so exciting, and you and I have had so many discussions about this. You know, and I want to put a little space between my colleagues' comments and mine, so it doesn't look like I don't have anything original to say, because I agree with absolutely everything that everybody's said up here. And you mentioned it about the communities, and this is really about creating better communities in unincorporated Sacramento County, and you, oh, see, well. See, I can't be original. I don't even know why I try, but, but it just always occurs to me, you know, I go to these other, we all go to these other events, celebrating what they're doing in cities, you know? I'm so sick of hearing about the city of Elk Grove and all the things they're doing, and it's, you know, I mean, this is, it's, but this is, it's a competition to an extent. How do we not only attract these infill developers, both market rate and affordable housing developers, but businesses, getting them to come to Sacramento County? And you really have, you've put all the ingredients in this thing, and it's just, it's wonderful what you've done. And a question I had for you is, how, you know, we need to be shouting this from the rooftops. I mean, you and I have had specific meetings with some, some business owners here in Sacramento County, try to get them interested in doing some things. But what's your plan to get it out there? I mean, obviously, talking about it here, and we have our friends from BIA will be talking about it. Can you tell me a little bit about that effort, Dave, so we get the word out?
Yeah, so specifically, Kim Nava is working on a press release today for this item specifically. But, you know, I was, you know, one of the recommendations from the report Mr. Carriage did was to build a, basically, a public messaging structure for this. I do think that's very important, you know? Per my comments earlier, I, you know, I'll speak to myself, I'm not always good about sharing that out with the larger community, and I do want to get better as an organization about doing just that. But I also wanted to get some wins on our belt. I want good information to share with the community. I think this is a huge step towards that, and I do want to shout this one from the rooftops, for sure. And we will be building a more concerted effort moving forward to build some public messaging around this. Because I do want our customers, you know, we work very closely with the development community, you know, Mr. Norm and Gualco behind me and others, but it's those mom and pop, it's the normal folks, just like myself, who, you know, built a pool in the unincorporated area in your district, right? And actually had a very positive experience with our building permits and inspection division doing just that. The inspectors were great. I talked to both of them when they came out to my house, and it was a really positive experience. So I want everybody to have that same experience, and I want to push out messaging that tells people, that's the experience you should expect to have when you're doing business in the county.
That's great. So a couple of things I want to, I mean, I love how you incorporate the values of this board in terms of focusing on housing, protecting the environment, focusing on environmental justice communities, and just, you know, the staffing, coordination, structure, culture process, it really encompasses everything. And it occurs to me that, you know, this board, we spend a lot of time and effort investing in the social safety net in our communities, you know, helping people, how can we help them get out of poverty or improve their lives? But unless we can also get investment in these communities from businesses, from housing developers, we can only go so far. And that's why this is, this is just so crucial. And yes, thank you for inviting me to the meeting last week. It is so obvious that you focus on staff so appropriately as the supervisor Serna was really focusing on during his comments, and really lift them up. And I love the opportunity to come and talk to them, and would be happy to come back at any time, because as you mentioned, a lot of staffers, they don't even know, they don't even know the board, or maybe don't even know the structure, and so I think that was really great. And just want to extend my kudos certainly to Ann from day one, you've been so open to this, and all of the other staff involved in this, just really thank them. You know, as I was running for office, I kept hearing from people, you know, the county was a great place to do business, and then it became a place where no one wanted to do business. And I think by, with this resolution and the efforts that you're undertaking, we are definitely changing that paradigm. And so I know we have a couple of public commenters on this, but, and I don't know if we have an official motion on the table, but I will, we'll certainly be moving approval of this resolution. And so with that, I guess I'll turn to our clerk for public, oh, no, I'm sorry, Supervisor Frost, you had comments.
I just wanted to say, there's already a win. My office is using Acela, and they go into Acela and actually get answers without having to call your departments.
Excellent.
And so they are going there first. So that, to me, is wonderful. Thank you for that.
Great.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have two public comments. Mr. Gualco.
Larry Gualco, in our homes. I just wanted to come down so that you could see the face of a builder and a real estate developer, does a lot of business in Sacramento County, and thank you for your leadership in getting this process going with this resolution. The Board of Supervisors, you're right, Supervisor Hume, this is for everybody coming through the doors. I'm speaking from the standpoint of the home builder and developer, but you're right, it's for everybody coming through the doors. Great thank you to County Executive Ann Edwards. Her leadership has been brilliant in this process, both with how they're filling the bus, as Dave says, and bringing in some consultants along the way to help with their experience in improving the processes and experience with the county of Sacramento. You've got a lot of great new people on the bus, some who have been around. Dave, I love the enthusiasm in his voice. When he gave the presentation this morning, it just shows how committed he is to this, to this process, and it's a lot of work. I know the county is busy with everyday work, and having to do this on top of it is a big load. Claudia, Troy, everybody who's filling the bus are all great choices. You have others like Ron, DOT Director, who was kind of doing some of this kind of stuff a couple, started a few years ago or more. And so you've got a good balance of new people and those who have been around to accommodate this process. So I just wanted to come down and thank you for your leadership. And of course, as, as our engineers and a lot of our co-builders, we're in full support of the resolution and the effort that the county has underway. And thank you, Dave, for your leadership and implementation, day in and day out. As you can see by his presentation, he's scrubbing the whole thing from top to bottom, and there are already results and already good things that are happening, and I expect that to continue. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Larry.
And our next speaker is Mr. Norm.
Thank you. Chris Norm with North State Building Industry Association, Chair Desmond. I want to thank everybody. A lot of plaudits going around, so I'll try to be brief, but, you know, thank to the board for authoring the, or for having the audit done by Mr. Carriage and by the staff implementing this. You know, what can I say that hasn't already been said about Dave and this resolution? He's making it look easy, but it's not. You know, it's really, really hard to capture all those things, and, you know, we are in full support of this. We want to be good partners with the county, as I've said for many years. You know, setting clear expectations is really good, and this is a really balanced, very, very balanced resolution that makes it clear that we're not trying to get around anything, we're trying to just try to make it a better place to do business, better place for builders to get housing built for future homeowners and families. You know, I've always said this from the beginning to Dave, and I think to some of you guys too, we viewed this as a real partnership. So I know that this is the county's plan, but if there's ever times when we can be doing things better to work with the county, interface with the county, we want to know what that is and have that discussion and make things work better for everybody. So that's a standing offer, and we'll be following up. You know, it is, this is a really positive step forward, and it's actually interesting, I've shared this with some of my colleagues at the BIA, and they said, "Oh, I want to get the hold of that, I'm going to share that with some of the jurisdictions that I work in." So, you know, we're pushing that out, as you say, you know, to everyone else saying, "Hey, you know, look at what this county's doing. This is fantastic. This is clear expectations." So we'll be happy to help push that out and have those discussions around the region and let everyone know the good work you guys are doing. So we continue to look forward to working with you guys, respectfully ask for an i-vote, although it doesn't sound, seem like it's in question at this point. Thanks.
Thank you, and that concludes your public comments.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to check in and see, was that a motion that you made prior to the public comment?
Yes, it was.
In that case, I will second that motion.
Okay, County Exec, you had a comment before we vote?
Thank you. I just, I know there's been a lot of gratitude flowing around today, and I know some of it was directed at Dave, but I want to take another moment to thank Dave Defonte. This resolution, I saw how hard he worked on it. He was very, very diligent about wanting it to be your voice without making too many assumptions about your voice, and that's a bit of a fine balancing act to accomplish, but I think he did so quite well, and I just want to thank him as well.
I'm so proud that he's a constituent of District 3.
Well, and I'll just say that there was some redundant language in there, but I attributed that to the chair's voice, so.
It's giving me a long ear. All right, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Move on to item 27, which...
For item 27, I will need a motion to drop this item. This was the Easton Place Land Use Master Plan Amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
And unanimous vote. And now we're on to your nominations and appointments, that would be item 28. And let me know when you're ready.
Okay, please.
Okay. You're continuing to March 14th, the County Service Area 4B Slough House Wilton Consumnis, the Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, continuing to March 28th, Area for Agency on Aging Advisory Council, and the Civil Service Commission. For the Adult and Aging Commission, Supervisor Desmond?
Chiefs recommend continuing to March 14th, pending interviews.
Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please reappoint Damian Schiff and continue the remainder to March 14th.
Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please reappoint Matthew Burnett and continue the remainder to March 14th.
Disability Advisory Commission.
Chiefs recommend continuing to March 14th.
Thank you. Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to March 14th.
This is all about you, huh? Human Services Coordinating Council.
Chiefs recommend continuing to March 14th as well.
Thank you. Rio Linda Elverda Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
Please nominate Amy Tackett and Tanya Silva.
Would you like to continue the remainder to March 28?
Yes, I would.
Okay, thank you. Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Chiefs recommend continuing to March 14th.
Thank you. Sacramento County Mental Health Board. I'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Please continue to February 28th.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Please continue February 28th.
And Ms. Frost?
Please continue to March 28, please.
And Supervisor Hume?
I would like to happily reappoint Teresa Rivera, and then continue the other two vacancies to March 28th.
Got it. Okay, and then that concludes your nominations, and you're on to county executive comments.
Okay, thank you.
No comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll look to my colleagues for any, any comments. Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to mention that I attended the Arrive Alive Fentanyl Program. I don't know if any of my colleagues have attended it, but it was at Folsom High School, and they had two groups of students, probably, I'm going to say, over 1,000 students who attended, and they had the DA there and EMT and personal testimonials, and it was amazing, and that was something that this board supported through our ARPA funds. I know their funding is up in June, and I was wondering if there's a way to kind of have them on our radar for continued funding for the next year, because I think they're making a huge difference. And in the program, they talked about how, how the fentanyl situation has unfolded on the East Coast and is moving toward the West Coast, and a huge increase in deaths among our young 14-year-olds to, I think, 25-year-olds. And so it's really important to get the message out and teach students about this. And so I think it's a priority. I could wholeheartedly support it with my district funds also, but I think it's a priority to continue, continue if we can, their funding.
We'll take a look at that.
If the board is okay with it.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, and thank you Supervisor Frost for making the remarks you just did. It reminds me that I do have a request of Ms. Edwards, and that is, before we commence our budget hearings in earnest, I would like to have a report before the board, an open session, doesn't have to be lengthy, doesn't have to have PowerPoint slides, but I would like a report back, and it's probably best presented by Lori Miller, in terms of the methamphetamine working group task force, I forget what, what the nomenclature is, but I would like to hear from them so that the board, the rest of my colleagues can understand as well where we are in our efforts to combat the methamphetamine challenge in our community. And I want to do that specifically before budget, and you can imagine the reasons why.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Absolutely agree with your, your comments and Supervisor Frost's comments. Don't see any other board members queued up. I do have an adjournment memory, an German memory. So I'll start with that. This is in memory of Jim Hastings, the husband of Cecily Hastings, who I know all of my colleagues know. Jim Hastings was born in 1928 and passed away on January 14th at the age of 94. He was born in Indiana and served in the Marine Corps during the Korean War. He had a career with IBM for many years that took him all over the United States. He married Cecily some 35 years ago, and they moved to Sacramento to raise their son, and they settled in East Sacramento. He and Cecily co-founded the Inside Sacramento Newspapers in 1996, and he was the CFO for the newspaper they started until he retired in 2019. Jim was the co-founder of the McKinley Neighborhood Association and served on that board, and served on the board of the East SAC Improvement Association. He also co-founded and served as the president of the East SAC Chamber of Commerce in the 1990s. Jim is survived by Cecily and his six children. The death of Jim is an extraordinary loss to his family and the community. Our hearts go out to his friends and family as they cope with this loss, and his wonderful legacy will live on. And I ask to adjourn our session today in his memory. Okay, and with that, seeing no further business, I will adjourn our public session, and we have a closed session upstairs, correct?
Yes, that's correct. On the second floor this time.
Oh, it's on the second floor, okay. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.